Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Hi, I'm John Brugan, Assistant County Administrator.
Mike Freeman, Legal Counsel.
Thank you so much, Stephanie Summer O'Doom is President of the Commission Board. So we have some interesting items on our meeting for today. We will start out with our Hamilton County Health Commissioner, Greg Kesterman, a comprehensive update on COVID-19 and monkeypox, welcome.
Good afternoon Commissioners, thanks for having me today. So things actually seem to continue to calm down a little bit in Hamilton County. At this point, we have 152 cases of COVID-19, and that's a seven-day average computed on Thursdays, and so today's case count for my team was about 73. So I continue to see decreasing numbers, which is fantastic news. When you look geographically at the county, you can see we are continuing to reduce the cases throughout Hamilton County, which is also good news. All communities are starting to see that downward decline. What we are seeing right now continues to be the BA4 and the BA5 variant. There are several different sub-variants of the BA4 and BA5, but generally speaking, if you've had COVID recently, you've had one of those two types of COVID-19. So also good news that we're not seeing new strains circulating within our community, as we know when new strains start to circulate, we start to see some increases in cases. Also good news, the hospitalizations continue to be on a slow but definite decline. We are at 175 individuals within our region's hospital systems, 17 individuals within our intensive care units, and seven individuals on ventilators at this time. So shifting over then to the community levels as put out by the Centers for Disease Control, currently Hamilton County is yellow, and I kind of want to dive in a little bit. I've put up a couple of numbers, you can see the yellow, we're at 10.2 hospital admissions per 100,000, but to the left, I kind of put up where we were at the last time they updated the number, which was Sunday, and we're actually at 9.9. And why that's significant is that .3 difference in hospitalizations per 100,000 is the difference between us being green or yellow. And a couple of weeks ago, we as a county were actually green, and we were sitting two cases per 100,000 away from being red. And so at this point, this tool maybe is not as relevant as it once was. So my team is going to really focus our communication on the top three bullets, which you've heard me say many, many times throughout the last many months, which really is making sure you're staying up to date on your vaccinations, and I'll talk about the booster here in a moment, making sure that you're getting tested if you have symptoms. More importantly, keep sick at home. And then lastly, if you have underlying health conditions or conditions that may make you more susceptible to severe disease, you should definitely talk to your physician, you should definitely always, when you're in large crowded public locations, consider wearing your mask. So shifting to the vaccinations, we are now offering the fall booster, as I hear some call it, it's the bivalent vaccine. It contains versions of the BA4, the BA5 vaccine, as well as that original COVID strain that circulated within our community. It's supposed to be, it's likely to be extremely effective against preventing COVID-19, and it is recommended for anybody two months after any other booster shot. So I know some folks waited a while to get their third booster, or their third vaccine or their booster shot, as long as it's been two months since your last vaccine, you are eligible to get this bivalent vaccine. There's a version from Moderna as well as Pfizer, and they are available most pharmacies around our community, and public health is continuing to operate our clinics. In fact, the Board of Elections, you know, they're getting ready for this November election, and so we had to move out of the Board of Elections. We will be setting up, we actually just leased space for a year, just around the corner from the Board of Elections, like a half block away, where we will stay for the next year, and we'll be providing vaccines from that location without having to move. So I'll share that address once it's official, it should start late next week or beginning of the following week. So we're excited to have kind of a home base, so my team can have a little bit more stability. The last couple of slides here, transitioning over to monkeypox, and I'd say this is actually fairly good news as well. We do continue to see new cases, although it's very slow, and it seems to be on the decline, which I'll show you on the next slide. But as far as putting this into relevance, the United States has about 23,000 cases of COVID, or I'm sorry, of monkeypox. Ohio has 240 of those, so just a small fraction, and Hamilton County has 13. This last graph that I have for you is from the Centers for Disease Control, and it's basically a disease plot, and it shows cases over time, and you can see in the United States that cases over time are now starting to decline, which is wonderful news. It means that the folks that needed vaccinations have had access to them, it also means that maybe some of the prevention discussions that we've had have had an impact. That is all I have prepared today, but I am happy to take any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you so much for your report. I noticed on the fall vaccinations, where we exceed the national goal in almost every area age bracket, so that's really good to see.
That's correct, our community has really come out and done a great job with getting their vaccinations, so.
And I was on the site last night, maybe the night before, and it said "booster's unavailable" when it was listing different areas, so what is that about?
So, you know, just like the beginning of COVID vaccinations, you know, there's a limited supply, and they get it out to the pharmacies, and at times they may run out, but we are, so my office actually, our clinic this morning ran out of vaccines, but ironically, we got our next batch of vaccines today, and so we're able to keep that location open. But in the first couple of weeks of having the new vaccine, you might see some supply issues, but generally speaking, there should be plenty of vaccine for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, President Reese.
Thank you for your presentation and some good news.
Yes.
Wanted, I had a couple of questions. One is flu and vaccinations, there's been a lot of questions out there, can you get the flu shot and the booster at the same time, or is that dangerous?
Yes, both vaccinations are safe to get at the same time, there is no concern. I have some, heard some people indicate that they prefer to get them at separate times, that's also not of concern. Flu season generally gets started right around now, and it starts to peak in the winter months, so you could go get your COVID vaccine today or tomorrow, and if you chose to wait a couple of weeks to get your flu vaccine, that would be no problem as well.
Gotcha. And then the other question about the third booster, I've tried to keep up with it, the third booster, are you seeing that that is a luxury or mandatory, what are you, what's happening now?
So it is recommended that if you have not gotten your, so you got your original series, which was a two-dose series, if you are now thinking about a third booster, generally speaking, what is being recommended, and I shouldn't even say generally speaking, the CDC says if you're getting a booster now, it should be the bivalent vaccine. So anyone at this point in time who comes to one of the public health clinics, or really any of the clinics, would be getting the bivalent as their booster.
Gotcha. And we're, as you indicated, we're getting ready for an election, so we're not able to be at that facility, I saw the notes on the door, but you said you're like right around the corner, can you maybe give the address for people watching?
Yeah, so today I don't have the address handy, and we're not quite there, so if you're looking for a site today, you would come to our office, we're open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for vaccination clinics. Those are available on our website, and then hopefully by the end of next week, when we start to open up, I'll start putting out that address so folks can find us.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner for being here this afternoon. I wanted to focus on the vaccine sheet that you provided, and just note in, it's a big, huge congratulations to you and your team and the other providers in Hamilton County. These numbers are fantastic, because so many, as you look above the age of 60, we vaccinated over 80% of that population in all cases, 96.7 for those that are 70 to 74 years old. I don't think at the beginning of this pandemic, we thought we would get there, but here we are, and I want to congratulate you and your team for getting that vaccine out to this community, and as you look through, above the age of 20, almost all of them are over the 70% mark. So it really is something that was a challenge in the beginning, and is something to take credit for now, so I just want to applaud you for that. On that note then, how many doses of the booster are we getting right now?
So we initially got 200 or 300 of the Moderna and 200 or 300 of the Pfizer, and as I mentioned, our team pretty much burned through the initial shipment, and I believe we got another 500 doses of the Pfizer today. So they'll continue to ship, and the Ohio Department of Health will continue to work if we see some small supply shortages, but I think while people are kind of rushing to get that vaccine, I think it may be a little difficult once or twice, but I think generally speaking, no problem.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to think of that juxtaposed to the numbers that we were seeing a number of months ago, and so I'm glad that there's interest in folks getting the booster. I've heard some trepid, not trepidation so much, it's kind of a shoulder shrug about the additional booster, so I'm glad that people are going to get it. Are you in the community at all, outside of the location at public health?
You know, our clinics have scaled down significantly, we are still operating, two nurses doing the homebound program, so if people are having difficulty getting into the community, they can come to us, and then we are still operating, I believe, two days of the week out in our various jurisdictions, so we are out there, just not quite as much as we were a year ago when it was harder to find vaccine.
Okay, and that information can be found on your website?
Yes, our website, or you can visit the Test and Protect website, both for testing locations, including those funded by the county, and vaccine locations.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, and the board decided, even though the federal government was going to stop funding vaccinations, test and protect and all that, that we as a board decided we are not stopping, and so we continued the funding to make sure that that happens.
That's fantastic, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Uh huh. Item number two, discussions regarding senior services levy, senior utility home modification pilot program, Suzanne Burke, hello.
Counting on aging. Yes, thank you, and I'm joined today by Ken Wilson and Kim Clark. So we're going to give you a brief overview of the program to date. If you want to move forward, do I have the slide? I do, thank you. Okay, so as you know, the program pilot began in April, where $1 million was funded through the county senior services tax levy for the utility and home modification program. The program eligibility is that you have to be a Hamilton County resident aged 60 and over, be an older adult or other family member in the household currently paying the utility bill, be ineligible for other assistance programs, have a household income of 300% of poverty or below, and for home repairs and modifications, we're not requiring ADL and IADL deficits. So the program was very successful, and I'm going to go into the numbers in a little more detail, but so successful that we instituted a waitlist on July 8th, and that was due to funding levels, and we currently have 687 individuals on the waitlist pending eligibility screening. So who did we serve? We're going to talk about utilities first. We worked, as you know, with Duke Energy or Greater Cincinnati Water Works. We developed streamlined processes with both of those partners. Those partners, Water Works in particular, required in advance of the funds so that the credits could be applied quickly, and we set up those processes. 1,146 individuals received a credit, 1,020 of those were with Duke Energy, and 126 with Water Works. So to date, the utility program costs $363,500, and there are about 13,900 in payments that haven't been processed yet that are pending. So just a further breakdown, 323 individuals got the Duke Energy credit of $500, and then 697 got a Duke Energy credit of $200. And what that is, is that COA had been working with Duke prior to the implement initiation of the pilot, to assist them with providing credits as a result of a lawsuit settlement, and so individuals that qualified for those credits got a $300 credit from Duke as a result of that settlement agreement. So we went back to those individuals with the county's program and gave them the $200 because we knew they already qualified, because the eligibility was similar. And then 126 got the $500 through Water Works. So I'm going to move over to the home repair and home modifications. So there were 229 home modification repairs performed, with 64 that are pending, meaning they are in process. We utilized our existing provider network first to obtain the quote and proposal, and then if we were unable to find a network provider that we were already utilizing, we utilized out-of-network contractors that we were able to secure. If the estimate was over $1,500, that required manager approval from our team, and the program cost to date for those were $780,914. The most common home modifications were stairlifts, ramps, grab bars, and other home modifications like that, HVAC repaired replacement, and general plumbing repair. So there is an additional $218,000 in outstanding expenses to be processed on the 64 pending repairs. So this just shows a little hierarchy of the services that were done. With the bottom, you can see the higher quantities for plumbing repairs, general electrical work, general carpentry, railings, concrete, and so on, all the way up to, you know, a handful of walk-in showers and window repairs. The average cost for all the repairs that we've done to date is $3,410, and then the average cost by type of repair, we've just listed to give you a perspective. So for example, if you're doing a lot of walk-in showers, in this case, we only did four throughout the pilot, but those tend to be a little more expensive than, say, plumbing repairs. So this is just a summary on the chart of the utility and the home mod repair programs combined, just to see that you can see the larger expenditure items and quantities were in the home mod and repair program. This slide just gives you overall demographics, so if you look on the, let's look at the gender first, 77% of the clients served were female, 23% were male, and then over on age, 55% were between the ages of 60 and 70, 31% between 71 and 80, 11% between 81 and 90, and 3% were over 91. And then race demographics, 59% or 860 individuals were African-American, 297 or 20% were Caucasian, nine or 1% were two or more races, and 20% or 293 declined to answer. This is, the next slide is a zip code analysis, these were the zip codes where all of the repairs and individuals served through this program reside. So you can see the larger zip codes where your 45237, which I think is Rose Lawn kind of area, 45231 Springfield Township, Fintown, 45224 College Hill, and so on. But you can see we've got broad distribution across the county in terms of participants, and that's really also shown by this little next slide, which kind of shows you the blue areas are the geographic areas served, with the darker areas being the higher volumes. So there were some limitations, we just wanted to point out, that we implemented in the home repair and mod program. Those costs, we know from experience, tend to add up very quickly, so we did put in place, and it's true in this program too, guidelines to help manage that. So one of the things that was excluded was roof repair and replacement, because those typically end up identifying structural damage, once you start doing that, and get costlier and more intensive than just the roof. Rental properties, so some of the maintenance repair items are the responsibility of the landlord, and once we found that, we would try to work with them to do that themselves, and our staff contacted the landlord about the necessary repair, so we weren't necessarily doing rental units if the landlord was responsible. And then third category was what we're calling like no repair needed, so it could be that somebody had an older hot water heater, but it was functional and working when the repair person went out, then they, what they wanted was a new one, and if it was working and operational, they were not replacing them with new ones, so that would be that category. So to get the program implemented quickly, we did a fair amount of outreach and marketing, we created a dedicated referral form for our care managers to quickly identify eligible individuals. We posted applications on our website, along with electronic Google forms, we accepted applications by mail, email, or online. We set up a dedicated phone line that we promoted, that for, just for this program, and that resulted in 3,726 calls to that program. And then we partnered with SOACT for grassroots community outreach, we created separate materials for them to use. Over the life of the pilot, this gives you a sense by week of how the referrals were received, and so you can see that big jump around June 27th to July 4th, and you know, we're directly attributing that to the 513 Relief Woodlawn event that Commissioner Reese, I think, attended. And it wasn't so much seniors, but a lot of adult children were at that, they came, they learned about the credit, they had parents, and then they contacted us after learning about that to get the credit for their parent or had their parents call us, so we think that was a very positive event. Beyond that, of course, we participated in your press conference in May to kick the program off, we attended the June 25th event, we promoted it in our newsletter and website, we shared information across the county at senior centers, we presented program information at Mount Healthy Town Hall, shared program on city cable and Waycross Community Media, and mailed information to 1,500 of our Hamilton County MyCare clients for their consideration. And so this is a little breakdown of the outreach and marketing results, we had 65 referrals from SOACT, 269 from our website, 258 from our staff who knew, knowing their clients, knew who would be eligible, made referrals, and then 3,000, as I mentioned, 726 coming in through the dedicated phone line, which would be learning about it any, from any forum. And then I just wanted to share with you some client feedback, here's just a couple, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback, I know I spoke with Commissioner Reese, who has had a lot of people, and I'm sure all of you have, say thank you to the county for this program. Some have written us notes, including some of these electricians that came to my home were very courteous, professional, and treated my home with utmost respect, they were fantastic at every single detail, and left me with an overwhelming sense of newfound comfort, knowing that my repairs were done right. I want to thank you for your patience, compassion, and willingness to explain the process, and ultimately help me to achieve the repairs I needed so desperately, that was from Kevin. When I learned about the program, it was perfect timing, because my doctor recommended I have grab bars installed, much appreciative, having the grab bars installed, and I feel secure when I'm in the shower, thank you Peggy. I'm on a fixed income, I could not afford these bathroom repairs on my own. Thank you to Anna for assisting me with finding a provider for my home repair, I really appreciate your help. Thank you for helping with my Cincinnati Water Works bill, I'm very grateful for the payment to my bill from Teresa. And we would get these in the form of thank you notes mailed to the office and phone calls. So program recommendations would be to continue the home modification program on an annual basis, based on available funding, so demand is high for this program, and when we were in 20, earlier in the year, we were doing our community needs assessment when we were preparing for our strategic plan for 2023. What we did, a mailing to Hamilton County seniors, and what came out of that, they weren't clients, they were just the general public, was a need for home repair and modification. And so that's something that I think is top of mind for older adults who want to stay in their home, is how am I going to do this? Faze out the utility assistance portion of the program, serving individuals on the waitlist through 2022, remain flexible on the home modification program to meet the identified need. So when, in other programs, we have to set a cost cap, and that eliminates people from getting something, you know, that's over cost cap being performed, and we didn't do that in this case, so we're able to accommodate a wider array of people's needs on an individual basis. We will continue to use our provider network, but when that, if they don't have the capacity, we will continue what we've done to vet and look at other providers who can do that. Also, looking at repeat requests, we want to look at those on a case-by-case basis, so depending on, again, if it's an emergency need, we may do more than one request for an individual, but we look at that on a case-by-case basis, because some people might need the entire house redone. And then lastly, your advisory council that we report to on a quarterly basis, we would recommend that we add this program to the dashboard, and that we provide quarterly updates to the advisory council on the program. So that's my part, I think Lisa's going to speak.
Sure.
And I will be brief, Suzanne and Council on Aging have been fabulous partners on this program. I will add, because she did not, if you do the math on the utility portion of the program and the repairs portion, it is over $1 million, and that's because toward the end of the summer, COA had run out of funding for this program, but utilized capacity they had within their current county funding to continue to try to keep people off of the waitlist while we waited to have meetings and additional discussions, so just like to recognize that. And just as a follow-up from the program recommendations, before questions, I'm sure we'll come to Suzanne, just wanted to note that the administration is continuing to work with Council on Aging to provide the program at the $1 million annual funding level that the commissioners had brought forward during the levy meetings in August. This does involve some balancing, because the consultants and the tax levy committee recommendations had included the program at a smaller annual funding level. Council on Aging's projected funding needs include several assumptions, due mainly to, as you'll remember from those presentations, rising inflation costs and continued home care staffing concerns. The administration's continuing to work with Council on Aging to closely monitor those during the levy period, in the hopes that we can avoid needing a waitlist in those outlying levy years. And I'd also like to mention that, as I've been learning, Council on Aging continues to work with the area relief providers to ensure levy funding is always the payer of last resort. Their team has been working and will continue to work with the ARPA staff, American Rescue Plan, to ensure applicants for the levy program are also screened for both the mortgage property tax utility program through Job and Family Services, and the coming soon home repair program, which is funded through county ARPA dollars. It's interesting to note, both of those programs have similar income eligibility now, with 300% in federal poverty level as the senior utility program. That's all.
Okay, thank you so much Lisa. Suzanne, I have a couple comments, I just, first and foremost, Council on Aging took this additional program on, they did not have it, we reached out to them, and they said, "We'll make it work," and it certainly looks like a lot of people have been helped, and it worked, and so I want to give my appreciation to Council on Aging. Just had a couple of questions, as we looked at that tier, the wedding cake thing that had home modification repair services, and it's a little light here, but the roof repair, I didn't see it on there unless I'm just missing it, I think it was, yeah, is it on there?
Yeah, no, we didn't do roof repair.
Well, I noticed you said you're going to exclude roof repair.
Right.
And replacements, so you have done no Next, and replacements. So you have done no roof.
Right, right. Yes, that was one of the parameters we implemented from the beginning just because our experience on doing normal home modifications is those turn into a lot more. And they're very expensive. Yeah.
And I heard you say that, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't excluding what we had already been doing. So that's good.
Yes.
Okay, that's why it's not on there. Another thing is, as we look at pending, people that are waiting for services, I just want to know, how can we help? Are those people pending because their qualifications are still being checked? Is it because of staffing? Because when we say pending, 64 people pending repairs on outstanding expenses on the first page you have?
Yes.
I think, so those 64 are people. And so my question is, how do we help you to get to those people and those repairs that are needed?
Yeah, so the pending people, and Ken can jump in, are people who've been sent over and are being processed. People on the waitlist are in a different group.
Okay.
And most of those, most of those pending are, they're getting the repair done, it's just not complete yet.
Okay.
So they may be waiting on supplies or so forth. The job is underway, it's just not been completed yet.
And the waiting list was pretty high from what I could see. You know.
Yes. I mean, do we have the waiting list numbers on here, Kim? I think we do. You know, that was implemented in July, so 687 individuals are on that.
So maybe I should be asking, is there any way the county can help to speed up the waiting list? Because once again, those are people waiting, as you know.
Right.
To get repairs done. And you guys have done an excellent job.
Yes, so the, yes. So the waiting list is really purely funding-driven. But I will, I will also add that, you know, we have, we were anticipating, just to kind of factor this into the equation, additional funds coming from Duke as a result of their settlement that are going to be made available to more seniors. And we weren't sure when, but we understand that's coming very soon. So we'll be able, if they qualify, because it's much of the same eligibility criteria, to be able to process some of those ideally with those funds.
Okay.
That we're scheduling a meeting with them in the next week or so to work through that next phase of funds.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I want to join what President Dumas and I know Commissioner Drehouse, we've all said, just want to say thank you. This is, I think, a great pilot. But I also want to highlight where it came from. This came directly from senior citizens. We were out there with the 513 relief bus, and we had to turn senior citizens away because they did not qualify for the ARPA help because of their social security check. So they were getting a social security check, however, it was not increased at the time. But all of, everything else was increasing. Duke Energy, I want to give a shout out to them because they also came to us and said, hey, you know, the bill is getting ready to almost double. And we don't want to put anyone off, particularly senior citizens. So we were able to creatively, as a board, we creatively came up with funding that we had left over in the levy because we were able to use ARPA, you were able to use ARPA for some other.
Yes, correct.
Things that freed up levy dollars.
Yes.
And we said, hey, let's, what can we do? And we said, we could do at least $1 million to be able to try to help be a stopgap. At the same time, we had not done, we were working on home repairs, but we didn't have a vendor for that. We will have it with the new ARPA, some additional dollars for home repairs. So there was kind of a gap there. And I just want to really just say thanks to the senior citizens that we heard you and we were able to come back. And thanks to Council on Aging, being able to switch up for the need and put together a program that, as you have indicated from your report, has been successful. And there is a need because there's a waiting list.
Yep.
Of folks that need help. I also want to commend your partnership with SOACT. And Sandra Jones Mitchell, I think it's the first time you guys worked together as a partnership. And Sandra being a grassroots organization, I think she just celebrated over 20 years or 25 years. And her story is remarkable, her real commitment to senior citizens. And there was kind of a disconnect. She was doing stuff and helping people, and then we had resources over here, and we weren't able to connect. And for the first time, it connected. And she could go in there, and the seniors she worked with trust her. And they were able to now participate and have all these great services that you provide and that we also provide. So I want to highlight that in a partnership with also a minority business, which I know is dear to you, a minority organization, rather, not business organization, working together for the first time, black and white together. I thought that was very important. The other thing is, these repairs are critical to our overall policy. One of our major policies, this board, is affordable housing. And the first step to affordable housing is keeping people in the homes they already have. And we can't just say new affordable, and then people who in their house can't afford to stay, and they're put out on the streets. That goes against what our policy is. We know that there's a gap, a need for new affordable housing, but we don't want that need to go up by seniors now losing their homes and not being able to stay as they age and different things that will be necessary.
Right.
So this fits our affordable housing policy to help people stay in their homes and it be affordable. And then lastly, I liked the marketing and the outreach. We established a one number, a hotline number, a number that can be tracked because you offer a lot of services and a lot of different things. But it was almost like the hotline created a senior citizen unbuzzment where people could call that number, and that person could navigate them through this program. And if there's other programs that you had, you brought people in, they may have found out about other things that you have available to the citizen. They don't understand the ARPA money, the levy money.
Right.
All they know is, I need some help. Can you help me navigate? And I want to commend your staff.
Thank you.
For answering the phone, helping people navigate through it, help them make it easy for them to participate in this program. So I just wanted to highlight those things and also the partnership with Water Works. I didn't mention them. So these payments went directly to Duke Energy and directly to Water Works. And we were able to get people off the books because Water Works was saying, hey, we don't want to turn these people's water off.
Right.
But there's no more moratorium. We're coming out, and we're going to have to shut them off. And I just think about how many people we were able to save through this program to be able to keep their water on in this tough time. So COVID hit, and we're trying to protect our health, but the sting of COVID did not go away. It's a major sting. And this, I hope, helped some senior citizens in understanding that we, as a board, we've always been for seniors, but we went that extra mile with this program.
Yes, you definitely have always been for seniors, and you did go the extra mile. And I do want to, in regards to the staff, Kim Clark, she is the director that oversees our whole call center, including that hotline for this program. And then one other thing I didn't mention in your comments that we would recommend for the ongoing program, or, you know, is that we did not consider water work companies in Hamilton County outside of Cincinnati Water Works in the pilot. So for example, Wyoming, Norwood, a couple of them have their own water departments that do their own billing and everything. So for the pilot, we just focused on Greater Cincinnati because we're trying to bring it up quickly. And if expanded and continued, we would probably negotiate some sort of protocols with those others so that if you're a Hamilton County resident residing in one of those areas and you meet the other qualifications, you too could participate.
Yeah, I think that's important because I know when the bus went to Harris in Ohio, 200 people were getting ready to, water was going to be cut off. And they were happy to see Hamilton County pull up and be able to help. And that kind of brought things to light, so I'm happy about that. But I do have some concern about the utility piece being cut off. I know we have to make a decision. I just want to, maybe, don't have to answer today, but I want to study what that trend is. Because this, I'll tell you, this, Duke Energy is very expensive. And water and those kind of things are going up. I'm not sure what's going to happen with the social security check. I know they're trying to do a cost of living adjustment, but I don't even know if that would help us. So I would like to get some data behind where they're going with this, what's available. If we don't offer it, what other things are available through Duke and the water companies? Because if you turn off your water, or you turn off your gas electric, I mean, you basically, you know, don't have a place to stay. So I just wanted to get that data and see how that impact is. And then also considering that in our budget, I think we put $2 million in for a re-home repair program from ARPA. Okay, and so we didn't have that before. So I don't know if that, so I don't want to rush to say, let's don't do the utility piece. Maybe this $2 million can help with what we're doing, and we're still able to help with the utilities. So just want to keep that in mind. I'm not sold yet about getting rid of that component of it.
Well, and to that point, I think in a couple of weeks, we'll be, we'll know more information from Duke on the dollar volume of the additional settlement funds. Because I think the first pot was 300,000, is that how much?
It was about 270.
Yeah, and I, I believe the next pot is larger. So we'll be able to utilize that first, you know, and then, you know, be able to come back with what that looks like.
Okay, yeah, that's great. So if we put them all in the one pot, it helps us understand it. So thanks.
Yeah, yes, $300. That's what the previous parameter was. That's why we backfilled with the 200 of the people that were under 300% of poverty for the county. We gave that, took them up to the limit, that everyone got a $500 credit. So again, when those funds become available, we'll be able to continue on using that source.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Suzanne, for being here. I just, I did want to focus on the funding a little bit. So this program was funded at a million. There was obviously a need, and that was limiting, right? Just the million was limiting.
Correct.
Because we had a greater need than we had the money for. And so, you know, the response from this commission was, well, we need an ongoing funding source. And so we rolled this into the levy conversation related to the senior services levy. And so hopefully that levy will pay, it's a renewal that will pass. And then some of the money that was allocated for other things through COA will be dedicated towards this program. My recollection, that's about $250,000. And so we do have an ongoing funding source. The problem is, it's less than the million that we burned through pretty quickly in the pilot program. So is there, I assume you're having conversations internally about any other funding or restructuring where we could get dollars from what's already being allocated through the senior services levy to help fund this program? Is that the case?
So yes, I think, as Lisa stated, in our levy projections, obviously, this was not contemplated. And so adding this program requires something else to come down. And the question is, you know, right now, in our levy assumptions, there are a lot of assumptions about inflation and the impact on service costs and all of those things that we're going to have to be monitored throughout the levy. And so, you know, if all of those assumptions that we have in there were to hold true, with the addition of this, the board would likely have to see a waiting list on the normal programs during the levy cycle. On the other hand, if the assumptions are, do not hold true, let's say inflation drops significantly quicker than we anticipate, then it would be maybe not that situation. So really, we're going to have to work with the county, I think, on an annual basis and really look at what's happening, what's happening with our assumptions. We monitor that quarterly. We look at, we know what we're projecting for bid responses, for example. And if they come in significantly higher than we bid, then we know we have to adjust expenditure. So it's really going to be, in my mind, an annual kind of review at looking at what's happening and understanding, you know, kind of what might the result be. So we just want to make sure, you know, because if everything in our assumptions proved to be accurate, we wouldn't have enough funding to serve all of the demand that we would be anticipating. And we would come back to you and say, there's going to be a waiting list if we don't do X, Y, Z.
Well, and the good news is, we've got ARPA dollars, as was just talked about, set aside for this very purpose. But they're one-time dollars.
Right.
And so they will not be available after a couple of years. And so hopefully by then, we'll have better information related to the assumptions.
Yeah.
And we can maybe, or rather, I guess really it's you guys reevaluating how you dedicate this funding. But, you know, I thought it was important during the levy discussion, and then TLRC is the one that brought it to our attention, that we had a program that was viewed as redundant. So we are no longer doing that program. And I appreciate the analysis, and really, it's fiscal responsibility, right, to review this stuff as we roll through levy cycles and then repurpose those dollars for something that this board has made a priority, which is this program. So I appreciate the flexibility there. And so maybe in a couple of years, you know, we can use some ARPA dollars in the meantime. But then a continuous review, maybe mid-cycle review, because, you know, this is a five-year levy. And so it sounds like the review will happen before that. So maybe we could get more information in a couple of years as to how we're doing with this program.
Yeah, definitely. Like, I'm kind of thinking we do an annual kind of snapshot, what's happening, what are the expenses for that year look like, and what does that look like going forward? Because conditions are always changing, as we know. And we're hoping that some of them are going to change for the better than what we've been experiencing right now. So, yes.
This program, as well as the elderly services program enrollment and all of the programs within the senior services levy will really be an annual update to the commissioners with the budget process as we move forward through the levy, as well as the tax levy committee and the midpoint review.
And we're happy to come, update the board on anything, anytime you'd like to. So do know that.
And Lisa, as we look through the different funding sources for this, we also have home dollars that address some of the home repair issues.
Yes.
And then there are the Duke dollars, as you mentioned. And I too want to shout out to Duke and Cincinnati Water Works for their partnership. I also got calls from folks that didn't, that aren't with Cincinnati Water Works. They're with other, which was like, oh, what? You know, and so that was something I hadn't really thought about. So I'm glad you're thinking through that. But maybe, you know, in the next presentation, we can get a better understanding of all county funds that are being used for utility assistance and home repair and kind of get a broader picture of what's available and how these funds all interact with each other.
Absolutely. And I think part of the going forward with the program is tracking not only the accounting funding, the Duke funding, any of the other funding available in the community. And Council on Aging does a great job as a single entry point to figure out where all those sources are to make sure that the levy remains the payer of last resort by running through those options, but potentially being able to present an update on seniors that have reached out that have gotten the ARPA funding or that have gotten funding through Duke and all of the other sources.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And we knew this, this was a great need. And when we said a million, well, we had in the back of our minds, will that be enough? But as you were saying, there are several pots that we can look at that impact this program that we're looking at now, we can take from other areas. I just want to compliment your staff again because, you know, as you gave us this report today, this is nothing new to us. In other words, what I'm saying, you send reports just consistently for us to look at different areas and where we can improve and what the, to gauge the rate of people that are receiving the repairs. So I just want to thank you that we don't even have to ask for reports to come. They come in, and you guys are just great at reporting. So this is nothing really new to us, more a cumulative look at it. So thank you so much.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for having us today.
Just as a quick follow-up, the next steps for the commission will really be including this program in the 2023 budget for senior services levy and then the senior services levy contract, which will be up early next year for approval and including the language for this program.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. So we're going to move forward. We have some departmental budget presentations. John Brugan, our Assistant County Administrator for Budget and Finance, would you like to give an intro?
Just very briefly, we have five departments coming in today. This is the third of four meetings where we'll see departments presenting. And we're still on track for a release of administrators' recommended budget, probably mid to late October.
Okay. Thank you so much. Our first department is the Sheriff Department. Sheriff McGuffey is here with some other people. Welcome.
Madam President.
Madam President, Commissioners, thank you very much. What I'd like to do is start out with a quick PowerPoint. And also to, I'll start with, as I bring up the PowerPoint, the two-page, the double-sided document that you have, starting with the graph on the front. And that graph reflects, one side is revenues and the other side is expenses outlined yearly there. So as you'll see, our revenue source, sources for the 2023 year, we have estimated those at 20 million. Now, that includes our eight townships that are paying for our police service and the, you know, all of the things that we provide for those townships in the way of law enforcement. When we talk about task force and us, you know, participating on task force, if there's overtime, et cetera, we are, that money is reimbursed to us from, for instance, the FBI, you know, Marshal's Office, et cetera. So that's included in that number. And also Securus, which is a company that we contract with to provide kiosses and so forth in the, in the pods for the inmates to use to order commissary visits, et cetera, et cetera. And we do have some revenue that comes from that in the way of reimbursement. Expenses-wise, we are asking, as you can see, 2022, we requested 100 million, but it was reduced to 91.3 million. Consequently, this year for 2023, we are requesting 1,606,000 for the year of 2023. Now, what I'd like to do also, if you flip the page over, you can see that very quickly. I'll go through this and then I'll start on my slides. When we talk about expenses there by category, personnel is obviously our largest expense. You know, the Sheriff's Office operates with some 900 personnel in various capacities, which is court service, jail, and law enforcement and unincorporated areas. So when we look at the, the amount of money that we are projecting for personnel there, we're talking about 93 million. And, you know, I do want to get into personnel and what that is and what we've changed our staffing model to and what we look forward to in the next coming years. In fact, next year and the years following. So we also have 11 million for food and operations and fuel and vehicles, which all comes up underneath, I'm sorry, the non-personnel. Vehicles are under the capital. But food and operations and so forth is something that we need to run the jail. We are running that jail and the expenses that come with it total that amount. Now, as capital, as I said, we have vehicles and as you know, fuel has gone up, but the fuel is actually comparatively in our non-personnel budget. So I wanted to make that clear, that vehicles are our main source of that capital expenditure. Now, next, I would like to go to our presentation. And first of all, I'd like to point out to you, our responsibilities, as I've just said, are the jail, the courthouse, that's what's noted up there, and of course, our contracted areas for townships and villages. You know, the Sheriff's Office, when we took office in January of 2021, we, you know, we crafted a mission statement. And that mission statement is very important to us. And it includes the accountability, transparency, dignity, and respect. And as I move through this budget ask and I talk about the things that we are doing with the Sheriff's Office, I'd just like you to keep in mind that everything we've done is with an eye to that mission statement for the public at large, in the way that we relate to communities and communities relate to their law enforcement agency, which is who we are. So next, as I said, we have gone over the revenues and expenses. I wanted to talk about that upfront and then show this slide for the public and anybody viewing. This is what I spoke about, what our revenue sources would be for 2023. And then what our expenses we estimate will be for 2023. Next, I'd like to talk about additional funding for six integral new positions. We have two intelligence operations positions. And I'd like to tell you what that's related to. That is related to accountability and transparency in the way of data. As you know, we have been laboring under a decades, decades-old JMS system, which is jail management system for our data. And we have now encumbered the money, thank you to Jeff Aludo and thanks to all of you commissioners, to get a new JMS system. That JMS system we're operating with is 20-plus years old, you know, and it does not quantify data. We still have people that are sifting through paper files to get the most minimal numbers that we might need to project. What are we looking at? What can we expect? What can we plan for? And in that regard, we are getting the new JMS system. But then we are also working on the infrastructure of connecting to the CMS system, which is Court Management System, and the Juvenile Court Management System. You know, Records Management System. All of that needs to talk to each other. And in the way of data, that is going to take personnel. It's going to take people that are on the cutting edge of how we collect this data, how these systems talk to each other. We have hired a consultant, 17A, to help us put that together so that when our new JMS system becomes available and we can connect to the CMS system, how, how someone is going to integrate that data, how it's going to be presented to the public. We should have dashboards. We should have data that allows us to predict and project not just what crimes are committed in our city and county at large, but also how many people are on probation? And why are they on probation? And how can we help them get off probation? How many people are incarcerated and why? And what neighborhoods do they come from? And what is the basis of their crime and criminal behavior? And how can we reach out and have an effect for safe communities with that kind of data? And that is what these two positions are related to here in intelligence operations. The two wellness programs positions are related to the fact that in this day and age, we understand that law enforcement is under stress, a great deal of stress. And we have been for many decades. This is not a new issue, but what's new about it, what's innovative about it is we're now addressing it. We're addressing what happens to law enforcement personnel when they work in environments day-to-day that are traumatizing, that are difficult, situations that stress them and press them. And I mean mentally, physically, emotionally. We want to address those needs and that's a part of wellness. You know, law enforcement agencies across the country are going to wellness platforms. The city of Cincinnati has a very robust wellness platform. And in fact, we are trying to model a good portion of our wellness platform after Cincinnati's wellness platform, which means counseling. It means outreach and it means peer support. So one of those positions will be someone who coordinates all of those functions and works to make sure that everyone's connected in our law enforcement agency to the things that they need to help them with PTSD issues, with trauma issues and so forth, and keep our enforcement agents healthy and mindful of what, you know, their day-to-day operations need to be. And in that wellness arena, we also want to embrace clergy. So one of those positions will be a clergy position for someone who is there to offer faith help, for someone who is there for outreach, particularly when we have, you know, horrific scenes of murders, et cetera, things that will cause stress beyond the victims of these crimes, but also to the officers who respond. Some of these officers labor in quite some horrific circumstances because they're encountering the first response to some of these issues that are highly emotional and emotionally charged and create lots of decision-making. So as I talked about, we would have a wellness coordinator and then also a chaplain that would be connected to that to round out what we can do for our officers' wellness. One corrections captain, and this corrections captain would join a, a staff of three other corrections captains. And this captain is unique in the way that this corrections captain and jail service captain will be in charge of, in charge of facilities and what we do with facility maintenance. As you know, we're working in an aging jail. 1985 is when we opened, and that jail has been in use 385 days a year. And, you know, all days and nights, the lights never go out, the city never sleeps. And those doors, mechanisms, all those things have wear and tear. Part of it relates to the safety of our officers, quite frankly, locks and things like that. Plus, we need to make sure we have a safe and secure and clean and operational environment for the people that live there, the people that are residents in that environment who are incarcerated. We have to make sure they're living in an environment that is working and well-maintained. And when I say that, I'm talking about paint, I'm talking about repair and so forth. So that corrections captain will not only be paying attention to those, that structure and what those projects are, how they're going, what we need in the way of windows, for instance. We've had a lot of vandalized windows, I'm sure you know about that. That corrections captain stays on top of that count, whether or not they're fixed, and also talks very frequently with facilities at large and maintenance people and making sure that we stay on top of issues in the jail, but also at large in the Sheriff's Office, which means our road patrol, our court service section, and so forth. So that captain is designated. It's a big job and it requires somebody who's really on top of how we're going to fix things and how we're going to move forward in the future. The one QRT position is offset by revenue from that heroin coalition. And of course, that's a person that is a first responder to the heroin epidemic in all the ways that you might imagine. We are having those positions catalogued as well as, we then want to focus on a employee recruitment, retention, and expertise. And that's where I'd like to explain to you what we're working on in the way of our staffing model. We changed the staffing model when I came on as sheriff. And, you know, I've got to tell you, the 2022 staffing model included the new Peace Officer Academy cost, which was we are sending 20 officers to a peace officer, a police officer academy, to be certified and then come back to our department and use that expertise and that certification to help us. When we took over, when I took over January of '21, I will tell you that our staff in the jail, our jail service staff was depleted, depleted in the way of, of jail officers who are police officer certified. Because you have to be to transport prisoners, to go on hospital runs, to work details, to keep our city safe and our businesses safe and so forth, which is offset by being paid by the businesses. But you need those people, you need those boots on the ground. And we had a very, very low number of those people. I changed the model so that we would pay for it rather than force our officers to go on their time, their dime, and work full-time. Quite frankly, that was dangerous and it was just a, it was a, a system that wasn't working well. So we have now produced 20 new certified officers. We have 20 more that are finishing here in October in the Peace Officer Training Academy. And also I want to say this, you know, it is a huge draw to our department to have that benefit, to bring people on and tell them, we're going to get you certified as a peace officer. These people have to sign a contract to stay with us for four years or reimburse us for that cost. So we're very fiscally minded as well. But those officers require additional equipment in the way of weapons, in the way of vests, bulletproof vests, tasers, things like that, and we're providing that for them. But what we're getting for that is we are getting a draw to law enforcement like no other agency in the region. In fact, my prediction is that with this new staffing model that we're creating and the marketing company that we have partnered with to do outreach and our recruiting officers and so forth, it is my prediction and my assertion that we will be soon, in 2023, bucking the trend of no personnel in policing. We will buck that trend, we will have personnel, we'll always have our vacancy rate because people do quit jobs and move on or retire, et cetera. But it is not going to be like years past and agencies will be asking us how we did it. And we have an outline of how. But mark my words, we are going to have staff. And we are going to have people out there who, when they want to join law enforcement, the first agency they think of is Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, not just because of the money, but because of the expertise, the professionalism, the fact that when we ask you to serve in our department, it's because you have a heart and mind to serve. That's why we're recruiting you. And there are so many people that are raising their hand, but they want to be treated well. And they want to join an organization that treats them like a family and cares about their working conditions, cares about what they experience, you know, has a very robust wellness program. Those are things that people are looking for and that's what we're going to deliver. And that's a part of what's in this budget. I'd like to go to the next slide when we talk about non-personnel items. Our non-personnel items are of course going to be our updated uniforms and equipments for officers, which is our body worn cameras. We are right now working to get dash cams in every patrol car. We do not have them and that is a part of this budget. We need those dash cams and you say, well, you have body cameras, so why do you need dash cams? You need dash cams because body cameras don't capture everything. They capture that one-on-one piece that you can view in this small piece. The dash cams are going to capture who was standing around, you know, what cars were on the street, what houses were you near, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to have a lot of extra information for the public. Again, goes to accountability and transparency. So we want to provide dash cams. As far as data storage, that's what I talked about with our IT portion. We're updating that and we are going to start creating data so that we can start really maximizing what we can do with our funds. You know, the days of throwing a dart at the board and guessing and predicting without any information are over. You can't make an impact on the criminal justice system unless you know exactly what the numbers are. You just can't. And people across the nation know that. And as you'll see, other departments are embracing that as well. So data storage is a large part of what we're doing in the way of non-personnel. Law enforcement drones, drones are the future. I think everybody in here understands what a drone is. They've been around for some years, right? They are very easy to use and they are not nearly as expensive as a helicopter. We spend $3 million every year on our helicopter program, 3 million. That's not even counting the cost of buying the actual helicopters, which we did some years ago. But you know what? Drones can do that and more. Helicopters are, right now, they're becoming flying dinosaurs. That's who they are. I mean, you know, what can we do with a helicopter that we can't do with a drone? And I'll tell you what that thing is, and that's transport personnel. Now, the last time we transported personnel in that helicopter, and to my knowledge, beyond doing just a average fly-around every so often to just kind of take an account of if anybody's grown pot or if there's a car chase or something, the last person that actually flew, flew in there was me. And that was just to say hi to the new pilot. And we flew around Hamilton County a little bit. So, you know, we can save $3 million, we can build a drone program that we are right in the process of. in the process of, we have drones now, we will have professional drone operators that wear these uniforms, that are already existing officers, that, again, can't wait to do the job. That's that attraction to this model. And those drones can take pictures, they can zoom in, they can do so many things a helicopter can't. And at some point, when the program becomes very robust, we're going to do, we're going to do a press on it, and of course, we'll invite you all, we'd love for you to see what we can do with those drones. We're building it right now as we speak. Replacement of tasers and so forth, again, that's equipment life, and then replacement of radios and the radio infrastructure, which is what that radar represents. When we get down to replacement and maintenance of vehicles, as we know, fuel costs have risen, and we're bearing the brunt of that, and that's a big part of what we do, you know? We drive vehicles, we provide law enforcement and services for Hamilton County in that way. Improved food service contract. Okay, so it is my goal, my future goal, I can't do it now because we're already in a contract that we signed that we can't alter or do anything with, but the future is to improve the quality and quantity of food for people who are incarcerated. I'm a firm believer in this, and I could do a one-hour presentation, I promise you, on the ways that improving food will improve our environment, improve our safety for our officers, improve the, you know, we want to limit assaults on officers, we want to limit fights and disruptions in the corrections facility in our jail, and we want to start meeting basic needs. You know, it enhances the stability of your population, which means the people who are incarcerated need care, many of them need medical care, many of them have had poor nutrition their entire lives. Poor nutrition affects your ability to sleep, it affects your ability to cope, it affects your ability to manage stress, I mean, there's so many things. You know, I'm not talking about serving a steak dinner, I'm talking about bumping it up from $1.20 a day. How are you feeding a person on $1.20 a day? How's that happening? Right? I mean, so, you know, what I'm talking about is creating something that, when this contract is finished, that is nutritionally sound, that has quality food, that we are still not spending, overspending on, but we are spending our dollars very wisely and actually getting a product from it, which, as I said, is enhanced ability to manage your life, which is really what we want people who are incarcerated to do, because we know they're going to get out. And when they get out, they need to be healthy, and they need to get a good start, so they don't come back, because isn't that the goal? And that does affect the bottom line. I'll move again to the non-personnel continued, and that's going to be the hiring of the IT consultant, which I just talked about, so that we can do these things with software technology, and those are the things we want to do, and it's clearly stated there, the cost is $300,000. As you move down the list, Selbrite and Guardian Investigation Software for Criminal Investigation Section. These are investigative tools that we need to have, and they're consistently updated, just like our iPhones, et cetera, and we have to pay for some of those updates, so that when we are out there making our neighborhood safe because we're arresting drug dealers, which we need to do, when we are tracking down criminals who have, quite frankly, murdered or shot someone, that we have the tools to do that. And those are what those tools are. They help our investigation section stay on top of it and really be some of the best in the state of Ohio, which is who our investigators are. So these requests that I have outlined for you are in way of delivering a superior service, and I said it when I came on as sheriff, and the staff, the command staff, the personnel, the sheriff's office believes it, and we're working towards it, we are going to be a model agency for the state of Ohio. When we are finished with our build-outs, the build-out in the jail, which is going to create situations where incarcerated people who are working on addiction, who need to heal and become better people, can live there in our jail and come out of that jail with some tools to make them strong and productive citizens. We are doing that, we're training our personnel, we're working on everything that will make us a superior service in Hamilton County. And then, as it says there, in addition to those requests, you know, the costs over the years, some of those costs are quite significant, you know, we're working on office supplies, right? You know, we keep a pretty good track of that, and paper and so forth, which, by the way, the chief deputy, I'm going to give him kudos here, paper-free and 23. That's his motto, we say it all the time, and that will also reduce that cost. So, you know, it is important, when we talk about uniform equipment, I just want to say this, and then, of course, take questions, you know, how your personnel presents themselves to the public is extremely important. When we step out of that cruiser, when we walk into that jail, when we walk into a courtroom in the courthouse, people know we're there, and they know we're there to deliver a professional product. We are not there as warriors, we are there as guardians, and our uniform says it, and the look of our personnel says it. So, having said that, thank you very much for your attention, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have just a couple comments. The first page, or maybe it's the second page, where you show revenues. Obviously, you show that revenues will, you anticipate that the revenues will go down in 2023. My question was, do these particular revenues include, we had about three entities, we were trying to get to sign up for your coverage, your sheriff coverage, I know Miami town, I won't name them all.
Oh, yes, yes, right, right, right.
So does it include them being involved?
Yes, so I have those noted right here. So far, we are being compensated from eight different municipalities, and those municipalities do include Miami and Cleves. Now, I will mention to you the Far West, which is Harrison, Crosby, and Whitewater Township. We are still negotiating to exact some type of payment from those townships for our services, you know? Eight other townships and municipalities pay for our services, and we deliver an excellent product. And that excellent product is delivered in Harrison, it's delivered in Crosby, and it's delivered in Whitewater. And it is our contention that these townships need to step up. Certainly, we understand that there may be a step-up type of pay increase, something like that, that we're very willing to negotiate with, but yes, it absolutely has to happen, it has not happened, Madam President, to your question, so I hope it will.
Okay, thank you so much. And then I see that the expenses, you anticipate an increase in expenses. So your total request from the board is, what is the total request for your budget?
My total request for the budget is $1,006,000.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to move forward just a little bit on additional funding for six integral new positions, just for me and maybe my colleagues also. If I could just get specific numbers on who the two intelligence operations, what that, how much is that? How much is the two wellness program positions? So as we look at the cost going up, I just, I can understand the need for sure, but if I could have more specific numbers on those.
I can provide that, and if I can back up, I misspoke when I said that, I said 1.6, I meant 100 million point six, just so everybody understands, since it's being videotaped.
Yeah, I see it on here.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I better qualify that, yeah, thank you.
And then I noticed you said 40 new certified, but you didn't mean 40 new, what you meant is 20 plus 20 more.
Yes.
Being trained, so I just.
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Okay. And then under new contract with marketing company, just if I could get numbers on how much they're charging, that would be great.
Sure, I can tell you that I believe in, I'm going to check to make sure my number's right, but I think we paid $50,000.
Okay.
$50,000 for our marketing company, and if I can take just a moment, this is just one piece of what we have established from that company. Right now, we've had, how many thousands hits?
There was 5,000 on just one single video, we've got numerous videos going through social media, so that was just one video.
So 5,000 hits, we have numerous videos going out there on TikTok, all of those mediums, that's exactly why I'm convinced we're going to buck that trend, and we're going to have personnel, and good personnel. And I'd like to hand out to you these pamphlets that are a product of that. These are the pamphlets that we are encouraging our officers, our deputies, and everyone to, if that had any sound. We're encouraging people to hand those out, they have a QR code there, I think they're going to attract a lot of interest. That's a piece of it.
Very good. Lastly, and you don't have to do it now for sure, but as we look at non-personnel, just in general, if I can get numbers for body-worn cameras, how much that would be.
Certainly.
Okay.
Yep.
So I certainly appreciate it, and I'm glad to hear about the improved food service contracts. We have been looking at that with 2020 and juvenile detention and try to change not only the food, but also the vendors to kind of, a little variety of vendors. So we're also very conscious of, and I'm sure you guys are more than us, but thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Sheriff, for the presentation, and, yeah, when you said $1 million, I was like, mean adjourned! Approved! No, but one of the things I do want to highlight, one is I like the fact of the goal of being the number one in the state of Ohio. One of the things that this board is really focusing on, as we're coming, I guess, we're not out of COVID, but we're kind of got COVID a little bit behind us, people are going to ask, what did the counties do? It's kind of like a reset of all counties, because everybody got hit. But the question is, after COVID, or as it's dying down, what did the counties do? And who were the counties that you need to go see how they did it? And that's one of the goals of, I know it's one of my goals, and I know hearing from my colleagues on the board, that's our goal, is that it's a reset, and what did we do as a county? Not only to invest and maintain, we want to do more than maintain. We want to be the place of the future. Many people are struggling to get folks to get on these jobs. The tables have turned now. It used to be the people were running the jobs down. Now the jobs, we have to, we're, we have to now go and be on notice for the people. The people are in, they are taking us through the process and interviewing us to see if this is where I want to work. We got a whole new generation coming up, and they look at other things, and so our board has tried to be flexible in looking at creating a good work-life balance and a place where people say they want to make a difference. So we appreciate that. I do appreciate that you're looking futuristically into drones, which is not the future, it's like, it's now. And we're seeing, we even saw a hospital transport organs through the drone. So I'm glad to see that that is part of your process in terms of what you want to direct resources to, because that is the future, and the future is definitely now. I'd also like the fact that when you come and work for us here at Hamilton County and your department, you get the training. This POA, I was at the state, and one of the biggest issues, I remember the chief of police had come into Cincinnati, and they could not, because they came in Ohio, and we have this POA, they didn't have the training, and he couldn't even carry the gun, and he was the chief of police. And so by you having this training included, it's a benefit to both your department and Hamilton County, where these folks can make those runs, the hospital runs, the other runs, they're qualified. But at the same time, it also helps them to have this type of training and have it paid for, and that's another advantage to come here and work in our department. My question, I would say, is, one question, as we're making all these changes, could you highlight safety?
Sure.
Because I know that that's something that is important to you, we hear what happened, obviously, in the jail, and we're trying to, with the capital improvements and make those improvements, but I want to give you an opportunity to talk about, because people say, oh, you're doing all this, but, you know, what about safety? And I know that's high on your list. Can you talk about how this budget and what you're doing increases safety throughout Hamilton County?
Absolutely, and thank you for highlighting that and allowing me to speak on it. Safety is our absolute number-one priority. You know, I will speak to our road patrol, you know, we have now tasked our officers to actually start writing tickets again. They weren't. When COVID hit, a lot of those things dropped off, and they dropped off and they stayed, dropped off people's radar, police radar, because, not, you know, no pun intended, but they just dropped off because the officers weren't pulling people over. Well, now they are, and the purpose of that is not to hand out tickets, you guys, we're not trying to create revenue by pulling people over and writing them tickets. That's bad policy. What we're trying to do is pull people over and say, hey, you know what? Slow down, all right? Our numbers of pedestrians that have been hit, auto accidents and things like that, and we're now paying attention to it, and the public notices that, and that is a big part of safety. When we talk about intelligence officers, those intelligence officers aren't just quantifying data, we're deciding what to do with that data and where to best put most of our personnel, and how our personnel best serves whatever community we're collecting data for. When we're talking about the jail, and we're talking about the money for the infrastructure, you know, those doors, we have doors that do not lock, cell doors, mind you, in that jail, many of them. I'm not talking about one or two, I'm talking about 50, I'm talking about 60 doors that don't lock. And when those doors don't lock, and an officer has to feel secure that that prisoner is put behind that door for the reasons that they need to be behind there, we are creating dangerous situations for our officers and, quite frankly, for other inmates, because that's when they get out and they attack each other when we're not there, and they scheme and do things like that. Now, again, we're working on fixing those locks, and that's all a part of safety for the officers and for the people that live in that facility. We need to provide a safe environment for them. When we're talking about the courthouse, our courthouse deputies constantly are complimented by the judges and the public, I'll note to you, because they are there for the safety of the people that come and go in that courthouse. I've seen videos from around different states and so forth where courthouse drama plays out and it becomes criminal. Well, it doesn't happen in our courthouse because our deputies are on top of it, because they're right there improving that safety, making sure that everybody does the right thing when they're in that courthouse. We are transparent, and honestly, I will also say very frankly, that accountability is a huge piece of public safety. It's huge. Our officers know, our deputies know they'll be held accountable, and because of that, the citizens of Hamilton County are safer, because when our deputies report to your scene or whatever it is you've called us to do, we are a lot less likely to overreact or underreact, because that comes from the top, and that is a huge factor of the safety of the public.
Commissioner Grayhouse.
Thank you. Before I ask you any questions, Sheriff, I want to ask the Budget Director for a piece of information as we roll through these presentations.
Sure.
Because as, it's been a consistent theme, I think, from everyone that we've heard from, no matter the department or no matter the size of the department, everyone has talked about new positions, and we come from a place where many, many positions were cut in the distant past.
Yes.
And we are now in a position to do better and reclaim some of those positions. We've also heard a lot about market rate compensation. We've also heard a lot about market compensation, market rate compensation, which we have done ourselves internally, to make sure that we're paying people a decent wage and providing adequate benefits to recruit and retain people to the county organization. And so I was going to ask the Budget Director, you know, since we have had the sales tax, that .25 that rolled over from the Union Terminal into the General Fund, this is, now, we're going into our third year where all of that money is available to the General Fund, and so, and the amount fluctuates, the first year was about forty million, it's a little bit higher than that now, because it's related to sales tax income. But I'm wondering, as we hear from the Sheriff, we hear from the other organizations and agencies, can we take the balance of what we anticipate by way of some of that increased revenue and juxtapose that to some of the requests that we're getting from the departments and see where those, those things line up? And so basically, if there's an over, I suspect it's an overage, I suspect it's not under, but I think that it would help me try to balance out the requests that we're, that we are seeing with every single presentation, and, you know, what we can do by way of the requests that are coming in. So I just want to lay that out there, if you can provide that to us and give us some, just kind of level set, just generally, where we stand at the county.
Sure, at the very high level, are the requests we have for 2023 have, are exceeding the amount of estimated revenue for 2023 by about fifteen million dollars at the beginning of our process, and that's pretty typical. My bigger concern, we'll be able to close that gap likely, but my bigger concern is that we are seeing lots of departments having to address wage pressures, and we're probably going to need to do more to address wage pressures in 2023. So there's more to do, that's ongoing expenses within, within that fifteen million dollar gap closing exercise.
And I just do want to say that part of the rationale for that .25 rolling into the General Fund was to do exactly what we're talking about, to address wages, to address benefits, to address things like a parental leave policy, all of these things, additional positions, as you note, to make this organization stronger and more stable at every level, and so that was the purpose in part of doing that to begin with. So it's no surprise that each department is coming in with those kinds of requests. I just thank you for that, kind of the perspective in general. So Sheriff, to your budget then, I just have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
And I don't mean to get too far into the nuts and bolts, but you did put it on your PowerPoint, so now I'm going to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
So we, and I want to say that there are some funding sources outside the General Fund, primarily state money.
Yes.
That we are always, and I know you are always looking for.
That's right.
I went to a meeting last week about jail funding with the County Commissioners Association, and so we have been successful in getting some jail funding collectively, this is from, you know, commissioners all over the state, for jail funding, which is a new thing for the state, especially in a capital budget process. Unfortunately, a county like Hamilton County that is not in a small rural area and is not a county building a new jail, because that is not in the offing for Hamilton County, we are not going to qualify for those dollars. And so we spoke to the governor and the lieutenant governor about either thinking through that with the fifty million that's been allocated, or just recognizing that there are some counties that are never going to get those dollars, and maybe there's a way to put additional dollars aside for counties like ours, and there are a few of us, or to take it and redistribute some of the fifty million. I'm glad that the rural counties and others are getting them, I really am.
Sure.
So I don't like the second piece, but, but anyway, just trying to put that on the radar, that, and with body worn cameras, as you note, there have been grants in the past from the state to fund some of these things, and so I know you are looking into that, so I don't want to have that get lost here in the conversation.
Correct.
You know, while this is general fund that we're talking about, I know that you have aggressively applied for some of these dollars, especially at the state level, because we've talked about that. Let me ask you something about, because you mentioned the drones, I'm not super familiar, I mean, I know what a drone is.
Sure.
Not super familiar with drones, but the helicopter going, are you suggesting, and I actually applaud this approach, if the helicopter were to go offline with a cost savings, does the cost savings from the helicopter pay for the drones, or are drones really expensive?
Oh, it more than pays for the drones. I mean, the drones are a fraction of the cost of a helicopter. You know, when you're talking about paying the pilot, you're talking about the maintenance, and as I said, three million dollars a year, you know, you buy a drone, you bought it, you know? To service a drone is, you know, some tech stuff. It's, it's a fraction of that cost. So we are planning on taking that money and using it in other ways that are more productive than the helicopters. And, you know, we're going to educate the public as to what that's about, and the fact that drones can take a picture, a better picture of any interaction than a helicopter can. We have drones that literally, you can fly them through a window, okay? We have drones that will create a surveillance for hostage situations and barricaded individual situations, where you fly the drone up, it's fairly silent in nature, you can move it around the property, you can see so much more. You know, you bring a helicopter to those events, all you're doing is escalating. You're escalating, and you're not getting a real benefit of what's really going on for your site. So, you know, the drones are, as I mentioned, will be manned and operated by existing deputies. So again, we don't have to hire any high-tech people to operate the drones. Those are deputies that will have a drone in the trunk of their car, and I'll just give you a comparative example. If we have a missing child in the woods, all right, child's been reported missing, it is going to take us at least a half hour, if not forty-five minutes, to an hour, to get that helicopter manned, get it up in the air, get it to the situation, so that we can turn on the infrared cameras and all the things. Well, you know what? We can have a deputy that's close to that location, because that's their beat, drive right over there within five minutes, get in the trunk of their car, pull out the drone, send the drone up with infrared, with photographic capability, and find that child. And find that child before the temperature drops to thirty, right? And the immediacy of that situation can't be understated. So, you know, when we talk about the use of drones, the technology is only going to get more and more sophisticated, and it will, as I said, it will increase what we can do at a fraction of that cost.
Thank you. I too want to applaud your approach here, where you are obviously not only bringing more people into the organization, but also making sure that they're trained in a way that makes sense for the organization, and takes into account some of the, you know, some of the things that happen in law enforcement when you're under so much stress and so much pressure.
That's right.
So I applaud that approach. I do note that the dollar amount that's being requested is quite a bit higher than last year's number, so I do want to note that.
Yes.
So I just, just saying it. Also, oh, I had one more thing for you. Oh, the patrols out on the western edge?
Yes.
I know, right, so we need to tie that up, and I know there have been meetings that have taken place.
Right.
It is just a matter of fairness.
It is.
And so I'm glad that those conversations are continuing, but we need to tie that up, and because that is not only increased revenue, it's just fair, that everybody pays for a service instead of some paying and some not paying, it's just not fair.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just want to add my two cents to that part of the equation.
And I thank you, Commissioner, because absolutely, that's how we feel. It's high on our priority list. You know, there are good men and women that live in these three townships that have the benefit of our police agency, and we're simply asking them to step up and pay a fair share.
Yep.
So thank you. And I would like to say that we have no intention of asking for a new jail, just so you know. We, we're not about that. What we are about is fixing the one we have and improving the process, so we get less people in jail in the future, and still be very effective in preventing crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments as it relates to the body cams, which I'm, of course, in favor of, but I think the big ticket item is not just the body cam, but the data storage, and how you do that, and how expensive that is, how long do you keep it? Because I'm also on the Public Safety Committee for the state on that, so we have to look at that, but definitely body cams are great.
Absolutely.
We were talking earlier about the .25 sales tax, which we are, continued, didn't approve, and there were some people not thinking that that was going to be good for us, but we had to figure out how we would get through the pandemic, and that certainly helped us to get through, and it continues to help us. John was saying about, we're about fifteen million over the budgets, the budget exceeds by fifteen million, and so one thing we don't want, I don't want to do, is currently, we're structurally balanced, the budget is, and also, we have about seventeen percent in our reserve, and I know John will stop me, but it's, it's close to maybe sixty million in our reserve. I know it's fifty-four million with fifteen percent, so I'm just going up on it. So we do have reserve, I know we are mandated to have at least ten percent in our reserve, so we're farther than we've ever been in decades as far as the reserve, so I definitely don't want to have to go into our reserve if we don't have to, but we want to make sure that we have the monies necessary to fund the areas and the departments that truly need it. So I think that was about all that I had, and I thank you for your presentation and your work on this and the additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an excellent staff that provided me with lots of information.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move forward. Our next item on the agenda, the Clerk of Court's Pavin Pareek, there he is, welcome.
Madam President, before he starts, I do want to, just want to make a clarification, because people watching want to make sure, when you said they're fifteen million dollars over, we're not fifteen million over budget, these are just requests right now, and I know you said, I just wanted to make, you said some other stuff with it too, so I just wanted to make sure that, just piggyback on what you were saying to just identify that, because I don't want, you know, to see out in the news, that they're fifteen million dollars over. That's not the case.
That's why we have such a big reserve, because we're not over our budget, but the budgets that have been submitted, thank you for the clarification, exceed what we've thought about as far as each department being funded. Okay, thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. Fifteen million dollars is more than our budget, so please don't zero the Clerk of Court's office out. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for having me here today, wanted to present our budget proposal, and I think it's appropriate going right after the Sheriff. I think we're seeing the same issues, Commissioner Dreehouse, you talked about recruiting retention as a major issue just across the board, we are facing that as well, and I think that's one of our top priorities that I'll talk to you about here in a few minutes. But if we could move to the next slide, please?
Oh, you have the clock.
Oh, I do, oh, great. So, kind of like the Sheriff did, I want to tell you a little bit about what our general vision is, short, medium, and long term, and I think this is the general long-term vision for what we're trying to do at the Clerk of Court's office, and everything that we're trying to do is in service of this mission. One of the things that COVID laid bare is that our office was not structured to be able to pivot. We could not move things digitally as quickly as we wanted to, or as effectively as we wanted to, and looking down the, down the road at recruiting and retention long term, younger employees want more digital processes, we know that. So we want to figure out, how can we do this in such a way that helps us long term with employees, but also, quite frankly, will long term save us money as a county? Because moving to more electronic filing, more electronic distribution of files in the courthouse is going to save us money. Historically, this office was spending hundreds of thousands of dollars just on file folders. We're down now to about forty thousand a year on file folders. We would like to not spend that on file folders, we would like to spend that on potentially personnel long term that could help manage an electronic system, that's getting the information where it needs to go. And so that is the general overarching structure of what we are trying to do here. We've restructured how we're doing our budgeting. What the budget looked like historically was basically general fund and then our restricted fund auto title division. What that has not allowed us to do is really look down, deep down into where specifically is the money going, where are our cost centers, where can we create more efficiencies, where can we save money? And so we are structuring our budget now by division. So we have seven different divisions, we wanted to make sure to look at each division individually to see where we are spending more money than we have historically spent. We want to be able to use that long term to be a little bit more strategic about how our, how we spend our money and how we are funded. As you mentioned, priority number one is hiring and retention, we're hurting. I think everyone in the county is hurting as far as employees go. We, we just lost another bailiff, so we're down now seven bailiff positions, and we are continually carrying approximately seventeen to twenty vacancies at any given time. This office, going back to the previous recession, was almost twice the size that it is now, and so we are a lean organization, but what that's requiring is that we're requiring our staff to do more, and we're requiring people to cross train in different departments, we're requiring them to do a lot more with less. So one of the things that we did is we looked at pay adjustments that were made at the county level that were made from the courts, and did similar pay adjustments to our staff this year in order to, quite frankly, stop the bleeding. Our main risk in losing our staff is to either somewhere else in the courthouse or somewhere else in county government. And so when we saw adjustments being made across the board, we looked at our budget and figured out, how can we reduce some of the inflationary pressures for our staff and adjust their pay upwards? What we did was give a larger raise to our lower paid staff. We wanted to do this in line with the budget that we had for this year, we didn't want to come to you for supplemental appropriation, so we did a pay adjustment for our lowest paid staff of approximately ten percent, which came down to a dollar seventy-eight an hour, to move them up to where we were seeing other organizations around the county moving their pay. What we were not able to do at that time was do the similar level of, percentage-wise, similar level of adjustment to our managerial staff in order not to break our budget. What we did take is that lowest dollar seventy-eight increase for our lowest paid staff, and we applied that to our managerial staff. So as we look forward to the future, our hope is to be able to level set that again, look at what we would hopefully get from our request from you for our budget for next year, and be able to equalize that percentage increase for our staff, for all of our staff, not just our lowest paid staff, and those of you who are seeing right at the Help Center. Additionally, our Help Center, again, we have ten thousand people that call or come through, we only have two lawyers on staff. The way that it is funded is through the University of Cincinnati for some compliance reasons, and quite frankly, if one or either of those lawyers left us, Help Center would be hurting. They do a lot, they do a lot for not a lot of money, quite frankly, and so we are, and they have not really, and our head of our Help Center has not had a pay adjustment since the opening of the Help Center in 2017. Or sorry, he had, he had a slight rate increase in 2019, but that, that's it since this has started. So we are hoping to maintain the current level of service and potentially work through our partnerships to expand that service, but that's our specific request from a budgetary perspective. Looking at some of the issues that the Sheriff brought up around law enforcement and her staff, we're facing similar issues with our bailiffs. We are unique in the state of Ohio, we're the only clerk's office that has our own bailiff division, but that comes with it some of the issues that law enforcement finds. For example, we need some new equipment. We are asking for ten thousand dollars to help fund a replacement of ten bulletproof vests. What many people may not know is that bulletproof vests do expire, and so we are reaching the end of a life cycle of many of those, and the costs, like costs for everything, has increased significantly over the course of the last few years, and since our last purchase, the cost just of these vests has increased by thirty percent. A new program that we're rolling out is working with the municipal court and the common police court, is a text messaging program to notify people of upcoming court dates. This is going to be a large-scale, long-term project, but hopefully not an expensive project, which I know is why we're here about the budget. So the hope is that it is not an expensive project, but that it could actually save the county a lot of money. We're seeking ten thousand dollars to launch this pilot program, we hope to then expand it to all of the courts that we serve, to ensure that people are being reminded that they have court dates. When a pilot program like this was tried in New York City in 2018, they found that it reduced failures to appear by about thirty-six percent. Now, that presents real operational costs for the courthouse every time somebody does not show up. It causes real costs for that individual if they forgot to pay speeding ticket, they get issued a KPIs, they get pulled over again, they have costs associated with that. It has a capacity to snowball. We can save a lot of court time, but also a lot, and a lot of law enforcement time, but also a lot of costs from the individual by running, by rolling this program out. by running, by rolling this program out. And so, we're very excited about that. We are actively working on that, and we hope to see a very significant return on investment for the county, um, once we get this program up and running. Commissioner Reese mentioned if the request is under a million dollars, we should just adjourn the meeting, so I think we should just adjourn the meeting. Uh, our general fund, uh, increase that we are asking for is for $725,891. The vast majority of this is directly related to being able to maintain the pay increases that we, that we gave out and being able to right-size it so we can bring management back up, uh, because management did not get, did not benefit nearly to the same level as our lowest-paid staff in that, in that process. And in the interest of brevity, I will stop there unless you all have questions, because I see Jeff's like, "Yeah, you got, you're coming up on your time."
Thank you so much for your presentation.
I'm fin, I'll ta, I'll take questions.
Okay, yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I just love your website. I just get on there, look at county websites, and it's so easily, uh, able to access. It's so clear. It's real clear to me that the clerk of courts department is so customer-focused, um, trying to make it easier for those that have to access, uh, court services, so I certainly appreciate that. I'm not trying to have you add any more money on, but I noticed you were saying about an increase for, uh, your attorneys. And just wondering, since you were standing around the two of you, have you thought about possibly maybe hiring?
Thank you. Hiring, were you able to hear what I said?
I, I was able to hear you. I, I was able to hear you.
Yeah. Um, hire another attorney? Have you thought about that?
So, we, we've thought about that. We think that right now, the University of Cincinnati is actually in the process through their law school of building out a legal access clinic. We think that the best move for us at this point, uh, especially fiscally, is to figure out how we can support that operation instead of trying to build more internally. Um, and quite frankly, the, what that clinic will be able to do is actually represent people in court. What we are able to do as a help center is provide basic levels of advice and connect people with some resources. So, I think in the short term, we want to see how that plays out in the next year or so. If we think there's a need to add somebody, yeah, we will definitely come back to you, but we think that we can handle, um, what the, what the needs are for the help center with this current request. On the website issue, uh, or praise, so thank you, look, it does need updates as well, and it's an issue that we are looking at long-term. It was built, uh, 20-something years ago, and the technology has changed. The capacity, kind of going back to the sheriff's issues about data analysis, what can we do? The requests and the requirements of a modern system are just not what these systems were built for. And so, as we look at, take a much more longer-term vision as to what we want that website to be, to the idea that the sheriff brought up of having dashboards available about what is the case volume? How long are cases taking? How many, how many cases are being filed? We want to be able to do that. Our current system may not be able to do it in the way that we want to, and then there's just some technical stuff that I don't particularly understand about the programming languages and how that's got to be updated to make sure that our system, that our website talks well to the case management system. And so, those are long-term issues, but we, but we do want to really focus on customer service and making it easier for people to get information.
Thanks so much. And when I think about the help center, I think about burnout and the fact that we don't want those two to get
Right.
burned out in the mental health aspect of that, and I'm sure you do, and as you said, you will consider whether or not, uh, you think of another one, and we, uh, talk about retention and being able to maintain those two that are there, so, thank you. Vice President Reese.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I like, I would like to ask the question, and I, and I do like, uh, looking toward this program. You talk about a $10,000 launch, to launch a pilot program for text messaging. I like the idea. My question is, is that enough $10,000? That seems like a low number.
We, we, we have, we're, again, we're, we're trying to be as conservative as we can right now, because we've, I, I know, so that's a, you've
No, I want you to be conservative, but I want to be realistic. I don't want to have
But we think it is realistic.
$10,000 and you can text, you know, 100 people and then
It's a hu, it's a hundred
300 other people didn't get text.
It's 100,000 text messages a month.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Uh, the, the costs of these, of these programs, I'm sure if we, if we tried to do this in 2018 versus now, that request would have been significantly higher. These programs have just, as time goes by, the costs are coming down significantly on them. Um, one of the things that we need to make sure that we're doing correctly is collecting the phone information and making sure that we're also not distributing that. So, that's, that's considered protected information, so when we collect that information, make sure that we're storing it appropriately. Um, but, uh, the, the costs on these are actually relatively low, which, uh, personally shocked me. I thought it was going to cost us a lot more money, and I was prepared to come to ask you for a lot more money, uh, but as we
No, I mean, and I'm not pushing it, because he probably, we probably would have said no, but
Yeah.
I'm not pushing that, but I wanted to just make sure that what we're having is effective, and you just answered that. Uh, we have been asking about text messaging where our jobs are family services. Whoever that vendor is, we need to get them, because we've been talking about that, because most people do communicate through the text messaging. A lot of phone numbers at the county, when you call, it says spam on your cell phone, and most people get very upset about the spam. Um, so, that's why I think this is a, a great idea, a great thing, and, um, I was very interested, and I want to thank you for looking at it from an innovative perspective.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Our plan is to automate as many of these issues of notice as possible, um, and that means not only text messages, but also seeing how we can integrate email addresses. People change email addresses a lot less frequently than they change phone numbers. Uh, intuitively, I would have thought us the other way, but what we've discovered through talking to some partners around the country is that's what's happening. So, how can we collect that information? And so, it's not just an either-or, it's, let's layer this. Let's layer the communications going out to people, so they know when there's a new, a court date that's been assigned in their case. They know when a new, when something new has been filed in a case. We think this could be very helpful for victims of crime that would help them in compliance with Marcy's law to be able to know when something new is happening in their case, so they're not reliant upon an outside source to get that information. So, we are trying to move in that direction. Uh, we think this is a meaningful first step, but if we feel like we are going to ever need more, I'll see you in about 364 days and ask you then.
Don't rush. No, I was just kidding. Well, the other thing I wanted to just, um, highlight, and I, you know, obviously, we liked what's happening with the help center. We also liked the partnership that we, uh, we had when we needed, uh, when, you know, we've got the decision that the moratorium in Hamilton County was, I think, the first county to say no more moratoriums,
Right.
and a lot of people were going to be, uh, evicted, but couldn't be reached, and we were able to put a partnership with, uh, the clerk of courts office, the sheriff's office, and when they delivered, you know, the bad news, they were able to also deliver some place to go to get help, and that helped a lot. So, want to thank those type of collaborations is what we're looking for, and it looks like
And collaboration's the name of the game. I mean, we're all here to do the exact same thing, which is protect and serve the people of Hamilton County. You know, to the point on evictions, one thing that we're rolling out, I think, this week is standardization of, um, information that goes out to every, uh, house that we're, that someone's getting evicted of. Here are resources in the community that you can go to. Here's resources you can go to for housing, for, uh, drug and alcohol treatment, for supplies for children, for food. If you're a veteran, these are services available to you. Our bailiffs are going to be putting that out to every single house that they go out to, so that way, again, we are there to serve everyone, even though our job, our bailiff's job is to maybe serve the paperwork on behalf of the landlord, we're still there to serve the tenant. We're there to serve everybody that lives in this county.
Oh, that's, that's wonderful. Uh, my last thing, um, Madam President, it's not in this particular budget, but I do want to look at, um, uh, our president, President Stephanie Summeradumas is really focused on having a, uh, satellite office to get out into Forest Park. Now, we used to have a office out there with all of these services, and just wanted to put on the table as we're looking and moving hopefully forward to doing that, looking at your office, because we did get a, I, I know I got a lot of complaints from people when we left Forest Park. I used to go out there.
Right.
Um, and maybe there's something with this satellite office and your office that can bring out, if it can't bring all the services
Sure.
that they used to have, but maybe they can bring out some of those services. So, um, uh, Madam President, I hope you don't mind me bringing that up, that that was one of your initiatives.
We're very interested in that. I think what we also want to look at how we can do is use the infrastructure that we already have. I know you had the 513 relief bus. Uh, we wanted to figure out how we could integrate better into that. We want to look at, we've got the public library system around the county. Let's use that. We've already got the infrastructure in place. Let's try to get out into the community to really help people, um, to reduce that barrier of people having to take off of work, figure out transportation, come down here, figure out parking or a bus fare, go stand in line at the courthouse, get through that, figure out where they're going in the building, then, and then wait where they need to go, get hurt, and then do all that in reverse order and including potentially childcare. Let's try to eliminate those barriers.
I like that, Mr. Kirk Pavan. You're sounding beautiful. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Drehouse, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Clerk, for be, for being here. Um, so, I noted your approach to wage increases and that you were, um, trying to stay within budget, which I think we all three appreciate. Um, so, you were only able to do that for some of your employees and not all. In, in that process, and, and I think this is a question I have really for everybody, because we at the county, um, did a market rate study to make sure that when we had, we were addressing wages for employees, some of our employees were significantly under market rate, some were over market rate, not many, uh, and some of them were very close. So, as you go through this process of trying to right-size wages for your employees, have you had the ability, um, to do, uh, some kind of analysis to understand what is market rate
Yes.
for the folks that got the increase, and what is market rate for the folks that are in a different level of your staff?
And so, what we did is it wasn't, you know, a, a specific percentage point across the board. Uh, we looked at each individual job, pinning it to other jobs that we had data from, whether it was something from a, another office in the county, whether it was from elsewhere in the courthouse. What is the similar type of job? What's a similar type of level? And where's that individual at? So, there were, not everybody got, uh, a 10% raise. Many people got less. Some people didn't even get a raise because they were already over. Uh, so, we, we did, we were very deliberate about looking at each individual person to be able to do that, um, and that is how we're going to approach this going forward. I think that one of the things that we also have to look at, quite frankly, is some of our more senior people that, um, have a lot of experience, have a lot of education, and we want to make sure that they are being compensated appropriately, again, compared to what, uh, other staff of the courthouse is getting compensated, what other staff across the county is being compensated.
Yeah, I, I think it's helpful for us to know that it wasn't just a flat-out 10% for everybody. It was much more methodical and more thoughtful
Correct.
than that, uh, because, yeah, I think that approach is important as you try to create, uh, fairness in the levels that folks are being paid related to the job that they're doing.
Right.
So, I, again, want to applaud your approach to that.
And in the last five years, we have really focused on creating specific pay bands for specific jobs, so that way, we can say that, okay, if you are clerk one, your pay is this to that. And for some of these jobs, we realized that we had to expand that pay band in order to accommodate what we were trying to do with certain, uh, with certain salaries. Uh, again, just looking at a market rate analysis, what do we think is appropriate for this? Showing people what's the top of your pay range, bottom of your pay range. If you want to move up, great. Here's the additional training that we can provide you to try to move up into a different pay range. Here are the different job opportunities we have available in our office. Uh, so, we, we've been very, very deliberate about how we do this, and so, we would look forward to continuing that process and working with, quite frankly, everybody in the county to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we all, we're all having the same issue right now.
Right, agreed. Um, can you give us an idea of the number of employees that got the increase or that, you know, related to the job, and how many are left?
In re, I'm sorry, in regards to, uh, the things that didn't get any raise whatsoever, it was really probably less than 10 that we found to be overcompensated, but everybody else got at least something.
Okay.
What's the number? What, who's, what's the number on everybody else?
If everybody, about 175.
75?
175. We, we currently have 187, 188 people. That number might be slightly different, because somebody just put in there two weeks today. Um, but, we're, that's where we're approximately at. We're, again, currently and routinely carrying between 14 to 20, averaging around 17, 18 vacancies. Um, and so, that's about 175 of the 187 people got no increase. The vast majority of that was more than that $1.78, though. The $1.78, that was the, well, 10% for our lowest-paid employees, is that what management got? That's probably about 20 people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Our next, uh, presentation, Common Pleas Municipal Court, probation and court reporters. Hi, Mr. Dreszky.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Uh, I appreciate, uh, your time and attention this afternoon. Uh, just briefly, um, by way of introduction, I have some individuals with me. Uh, Judge Alan Triggs is the second presiding, presiding in administrative judge of the Common Pleas Court. He's currently speaking with the clerk back there. Judge Terry Nestor is the presiding and administrative judge currently, but he is, uh, in a jury trial right now. Uh, Judge Kissinger as well, he's the municipal presiding and administrative judge. He is, uh, the duty judge now and has other responsibilities and was not able to make it today. I do, however, have Sue Dostal here with me. Um, Sue is in her second year, starting her second year as the assistant court administrator in Common Pleas. And Andy Gillen is, uh, an assistant court administrator, uh, for municipal court. And finally, Mindy Kirchner is our business, business manager in the probation department. So, um, as you indicated, Madam President, um, I'll be presenting on, uh, four budgets, um, that are under the court's auspices, uh, Common Pleas, which also contains the large network support and application support contracts. Um, and the municipal court, which includes the electronic monitoring unit, and I'll be sharing some really good news, I think, uh, to the board on the usage of that and the savings that we're experiencing. Uh, court reporter budget, and then finally, the adult probation, uh, budget, which includes Common Pleas and municipal courts. As everyone else has been indicating, um, our biggest struggle, uh, has been the employee recruitment, development, and retention. That's been our largest operational issue for quite a few years. Um, obviously, as, as indicated, I think we've, we're past the major COVID component, but I feel like we're, we're still in that fog, so we're continuing to try, to work our way through that. And, um, the, the things that we have tried to do within that organizational structure is new recruitment efforts, um, uh, local job and county fairs, uh, the utilization of a website called Handshake, which, um, uh, it's not quite a LinkedIn-level-type thing, but, uh, it deals with a lot of, um, recent college graduates, and it allows us to specifically target particular colleges, um, uh, to attract, uh, them to apply to various positions that we have throughout the court. We've seen a little bit of success with that. And something that we're excited about that should be coming on board within the next, um, four or five weeks is reinstituting an internship, uh, uh, program through the probation department at local colleges. So, um, we will be presenting to various, uh, colleges throughout the communities nearby in an attempt to recruit students who are interested in that criminal justice field. Uh, they can get their feet wet. They can see, and I, I heard somebody saying before, um, employees, uh, who are, are seeking employment, they're new these days. They are, they are looking at new things, new innovations for, uh, an employer to provide to them. Uh, in an essence, sometimes we feel like we're being interviewed. So, it's nice to be able to bring something forward like that, um, a, an internship program. We're trying to get it so that it would be a paid internship, um, that we could provide, uh, you know, offset some of the costs that would be involved for them coming down and, um, and working for us. So, um, the other area, we followed the, the board's lead on other retention policies, like expanding parental, uh, leave benefits and also the tuition reimbursement to advance educational goals. Uh, and I've seen firsthand, uh, within my office, uh, actually, the, um, jury commissioner space, um, one person already taking advantage of the parental leave benefits. Uh, and, um, it's a male, and I think it's just important that, um, a father is at home with that child as, as with a mother. Uh, it's been a great experience, and I know that it's happened, um, several other times within the courts already. And again, that's what's going to attract, uh, people to look at Hamilton County courts as a place, uh, that they would like to work. What we're really trying to do, uh, as well, is, uh, the development and retention of those employees too. The problem that we were seeing around COVID, uh, and even into last year, is a critical group of employees, those that have been employed for two to five years. In fact, I talked to one of our directors today. He said, "You might as well just say zero to five years." Those individuals that have been employed for a short period of time with the court, but we've expended a lot of time, effort, and resources in them to get them onboard to understanding what their job is, and, um, we have jobs that are not very complex, but we have jobs that are very complex, like a probation officer who, uh, at the end of training is, is going to be, uh, trained to use a taser and a firearm, uh, to be able to, uh, subject control and de-escalation tactics. So, there's a lot that goes into training those individuals, and what we were finding is, um, especially in the pandemic level, we lost probably And what we were finding is, especially in the pandemic level, we lost probably seven or eight people as a result of other opportunities outside of the court. And then, and then we're stuck. I believe we're at about eight or 10 open positions within the probation department. So we feel like we're starting from ground zero again. But again, those things that I previously mentioned are things that we are trying to do to attract employees. The other area, too, is pre-trial services, which, as the Commissioners know, anyone who goes into the Justice Center is interviewed by one of the pre-trial employees so that they are prepared to provide information to the judges the following day on arraignment. And that's a 24/7 operation. So sometimes it's difficult to fill all of those positions. I understand we're about two employees short there, but we're working towards ways to continue to attract employees. And one of the other ways is through what we've been able to accomplish is market rate salary adjustments, again, indicating those positions of adult probation and pre-trial services being the major issue. I know you heard earlier this week, or maybe last week, from juvenile court, and was having conversations with the administrator there, Ms. Gunther, and some time ago, we understood that they had looked at their salaries and reviewed those, and they had increased their starting salaries in the probation department. So that kind of began our search to what was happening within our own pay scales. So we took a salary survey of the large urban counties throughout the state, which has been a really good barometer for us, to check in with Franklin County and Cuyahoga, Butler County and Warren County and our surrounding counties. And what we were finding is that we were, again, significantly under those positions across the court, excuse me, across the state in a majority of positions. And significantly, I'm not sure if you've heard this from many other presenters, but Franklin County salaries have significantly increased. We're starting our probation department at about $43,000, $44,000. Every time I see a job posting out of Franklin County, it's starting in the 60s. And that's significant. We obviously took that into account when we were looking at what we felt comfortable with for salary adjustments. And it's, quite honestly, it's astonishing that they're able to make that significant of a jump. Would like to point out, going through all of this, the courts have always worked with the Budget Office. We've talked about this since the beginning of the year and making this type of a move. We are, spoke with Lisa Anderson, I believe, and Lisa's here, spoke to her earlier that we need to get together and take a look at the monies that we're going to be able to offset with grant funding. And I believe that we can significantly soften the impact on the general fund obligation. So I want to point out a couple of things with regard to a couple of different departments. The Court of Common Pleas, as you're aware, there was a changeover within the control of the courthouse, and we're continuing to make improvements with those changes. And a couple of different areas here that we are seeking some assistance on, and one is a direct result of the pandemic. It resulted in continued higher-than-average civil overages or backlog cases, more so in civil as opposed to the criminal side of things, but there is a backlog on criminal matters, and I can talk about that in a minute. And what I mean by overages is there are Supreme Court guidelines as to how quickly a case should be resolved. And I believe we're about, have an overage across the court of criminal and civil of approximately 1,800 cases. And it's not unique to Hamilton County. This is happening across the state. And the Supreme Court has recognized that. We're working with the Supreme Court in an attempt to obtain funding, to provide monies that would help reduce that backlog. We're hopeful to have an announcement on that soon. It's been some time since we put in the application for that, but we hope to hear from that soon. The criminal backlog, the sheriff was here earlier. I know at one point, we were talking about around the pandemic level, that there were approximately 80 homicide cases that were, still had not reached the trial phase. And as the board's probably aware, when those offenders are in the Justice Center, they can only be housed in one cell. So they don't double up in those cells. So that provides pressure in the jail. The judges are well aware of that. With the lifting of a lot of the pandemic restrictions, it's been full bore ahead. Our jury commission space is continually occupied Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, with panels being prepared to go out for trials to the 16 Common Pleas judges and the 14 municipal judges. And many of those cases are homicides. We have prioritized those so that when panels are available, the homicide cases take precedent, and they take those jurors and begin their cases. The other position is a new one. It's a public information officer, and if Bridget Doherty is available, we would love to have her on staff. Bridget, I have found to be wonderful to work with, and the court has been looking at this for some time. And despite my effort to trying to put out a couple of press releases and have them reviewed by Bridget, I think the court does want to go in a direction that would provide for a full-time public information officer. And I think that what that does is it increases the transparency of the courts so that we can produce information that would be placed on our website and highlight the various aspects of what the court is doing. And we'll get into some of those exciting things here in a minute, too. But also handle all public relations communications and developing a cohesive social media strategy across the different platforms that we have. So those are two things that I wanted to highlight in terms of the Common Pleas ask at this time. And we'd be excited to have those positions filled. So the other area, I think, is some really good news to hear, is we have seen a significant increase in the utilization of the electronic monitoring department. April of 2019 is when the courts took the EMD department back from the Sheriff's Department, and we've been able to do several things that have increased that usage. One of the big areas is the old technology was radio frequency-based. We've been able to eliminate that and gone to all GPS units, which, if you haven't seen it, is spectacular technology to see. You can see where the individual placed on those electronic monitorings appears during different times in the day. You can set exclusion zones on them, which would be in relation to the Juris Monitor, where you have a victim that's tied into this system as well. And SCRAM units, which are alcohol monitoring units, so that individuals are not being housed in the jail. They have a SCRAM unit, which is, has capability of detecting whether or not somebody's been consuming alcohol. So little increase in the technology there and the opening up of caseloads among the electronic monitoring officers that are currently working in there. We've seen 155% increase in the usage of those three technologies, the GPS bracelets, the Juris Monitor. I'll get to the cost savings in a minute, but something that really can't be quantified in terms of cost is the fact that when an individual is on pre-trial release on EMD, who, they're presumptively innocent persons, they're able to maintain community ties. They're able to maintain their housing and keeping employment, which is tied to success in navigating through the criminal justice system. And I think this would be welcome news to the Commissioners and the sheriff in terms of the usage of EMD. And this is a little bit of an extrapolation, but this is the estimated number of jail bed days that have been saved or will be saved for calendar year 2022. 254,380 jail bed days at a per diem of $65. That amounts to $16,534,700. Obviously, that's a gross savings. There is the cost associated with running that department and the officers that are there. We have a contract for the EMD equipment and whatnot. But again, that's a significant savings, and the judges are well aware of the costs involved there and have really stepped up in utilizing this technology. So we're very happy to highlight that for the board. And moving forward, we will continue to do the best that we can. And I think what we've found is there's obviously a balance there, that we still have to protect the community. And this has done a significant job towards keeping the community safe, so. Boy, it all seems to be focused on technology, and this is another piece that I think the board will be interested in. And clearly, there's been a shift in the court reporting over the last eight to 10 years, and it's really being driven by technology. And several years ago, there were reporting schools here in town, and we just don't, we don't have one anymore. I don't even believe there's one in the state of Ohio. So we're just not seeing new people going into the field of court reporting and stenography. And a large part of that is because of technology. And the courts have, in the past, had had court reporters in each courtroom. So 30 courtrooms plus magistrates' rooms and other areas of the court. Obviously, you have to have staff onboard to assure that any sick and vacation time is taken care of. So it's a big operation. I believe there were 38 court reporters or FTEs within that budget, and we're expecting to see some retirements here in the next 12 to 18 months. But what we have done in anticipation of this change in technology and the change of that workforce is to outfit 10 courtrooms with technology from BIS. And we've found that technology to just be wonderful. And we've had discussions with the Budget Office about outfitting the remaining four municipal courtrooms with additional units from savings as a result of not having as many court reporters within the court reporter budget. So the cost to do each room is anywhere between $30,000 and $50,000, and there's an approximately $5,000 annual maintenance per unit. So just looking down the line in the next several years, it's clear that this is the way that we're going to be going. There's, and the way we'd be addressing the employee issue is clearly through attrition. There's no intent here to, to just remove the individuals from employment as court reporters. It's only going to be through attrition. And what we've seen is we can really see some, some cost savings here with the reduction of, at each FTE, we'd save salary and benefits approximately $71,800. Obviously, in that first year of installment of the machine and the annual maintenance, we're not going to see $71,000 in savings, but over the course of the years moving forward, we would see additional savings from those, the benefits of that technology. I know the board's well aware of our specialty courts. Just to highlight, in municipal court, we have two mental health dockets, one change court docket and one veterans court docket. In Common Pleas, we have three mental health court dockets, one veteran treatment court docket, and of course, Judge Sanders Drug Treatment and Recovery Court. And all of these courts are providing specialized supervision and treatment for those individuals with substance abuse issues that have resulted in their criminal activity. And we're really excited to soon be introducing Wendy Cross's, Judge Wendy Cross's Welcome Home Reentry Court. She's done a tremendous job in developing this. She's working very closely with Trina Jackson with the Office of Reentry. And Trina's office is going to be able to assist in this process by coordination with Judge Cross's docket. The, I think they're going to be able to provide a coordinator and a case manager, and they'll work closely with an assigned probation officer that we've already announced. And so those teams are getting lined up and ready to go, I hope, by the end of September, but we'll certainly make the board aware of when we do come online with that. And basically, the idea behind the court is to go out to the southwest Ohio prison facilities and target individuals that would be good for this docket. And they would be low-level felony four, felony five offenders to begin with, individuals who are shortly going to be coming back into our community and provide them with wraparound services, drug treatment, housing resources, employment resources. And we're really excited about that. And finally, just another note, Judge Sanders has worked tremendously hard in her Drug Treatment and Recovery Court. And we are waiting a word of a large SAMSA grant that's going to allow a large expansion of the substance abuse, substance use and disorder treatment and recovery and support services. We hope to expand services as high as 800 individuals per year. So that's certainly a significant impact on the community, and certainly have to commend her on the efforts that she has done in moving that court forward. So that's all I have at this point. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm just really trying to curb my enthusiasm as I sit here, because the report that you have given me shows that we're not looking, not that we always did, but maybe more than ever, we're looking at the person and not just the number on their back or wherever it is. And so I am really excited, especially when you talked about the electronic monitoring. And I really wanted to stand up and clap, but I thought I might be the only one doing it. But when you talk about the savings of over $16 million, that is something to shout about, to talk about, to be in the paper. And so when you think about, I remember when it came before us in 19, whether or not we wanted to prove from the sheriffs to you guys doing it, and I thought the least restrictive that we can do, if they're able to do that, and to maintain a healthy family by keeping them in their home and to decrease the trauma of going into a jail, or maybe they had already been in. And so we knew at that time that it was a great decision, and you guys have really, and ladies, have really done, it's at 155% increase.
Right.
And we don't want anybody on the monitor. We don't want anybody in jail. But the fact that they can be out and maintain, of course, all of them have not maintained, but this is just, I'm just really excited about what you guys are doing over there. And so, and even the drug court and all of that. So we're looking at the person and not just the number. So I don't have any questions specifically, but I just needed to make those comments.
Well, thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. And that department works extremely hard. They are a 24/7 operation as well, and they're receiving calls at all nights of the hour or all hours of the night. And I applaud them for being able to handle what is a stressful situation many times when they have to interact and get up in the middle of the night. So thank you very much for your comments, and I'll take those back to them.
Absolutely. So total request, budget request?
Yeah. Let me go to my other paper here.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it's, the total request is 36, about 36.4, 36.5. What's not taken into account on that, however, I have mentioned some of the grant funding and some of the opportunities that have come along, especially with Judge Sanders' court. If she does get that grant, there are funding, there's funding available for personnel. So that, and that's why I'm going to have to work closely with Lisa and the Budget Office. But I don't believe that that would be our final number, that 36.4, 36.5.
It'll go down.
I think it'll go down, yes.
Go down because of the grants, yes.
Right.
Okay. Judge Triggs, how are you back there?
Doing great.
You were busy talking to the clerk.
I just want, I just want to say I'm trying to mediate a case while it's over here.
Okay. Sure.
We need additional mediators.
Uh huh, absolutely.
To deal with the call cases.
Okay, great. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. And just wanted to say that the innovative things coming out of this particular court, just want to give a shout out to everyone involved. And I know you said Judge Nestor is at a case itself right now.
Yes.
But also wanted to acknowledge Judge Triggs, as talking about, he's mediating a case, working in two places at one time. So, and Judge Wendy Cross, working with our reentry director, Trina Jackson, this Welcome Home Reentry Court, I'm very excited to see that and what comes out of that, because that's an innovative thing, and we can be a leader in that. And also Judge Sanders, who is working really hard to get more grants in, and very innovative. So this court has been very, very innovative. The question that I have is probably for our Budget Director, Franklin County, because we hear a lot about Franklin County. And I had asked about Franklin County on some other things. I said, man, how are they able to do this and do that? Because we're very competitive. And our former, being from the State House, myself, Commissioner Dreehouse, we've served with at least two of them over at Franklin County. We know that group, and, you know, we always have an inside competitive nature about beating out Franklin County on these type of things. But Franklin County, they have a lot of money. I don't know if it came from, I understand maybe there was something when they built the courthouse. But can you explain that, Mr. Brugan, about Franklin County and how they're getting so much money, or have so much money?
Can I just interject? I just texted my chief of staff and said, how much money does Franklin County get from the sales tax for their general fund, which is what we're talking about? So we're at .75, they're at 1.25.
Right.
So they have a significant amount of money that's going in just for the, and then they've got a special district at .5. So they're quite a bit higher than we are, which is part of this dynamic that you referred to.
And I think they had a tax on for their courthouse that stayed on, is what I was told by Jeff Aluda.
That's probably what, yeah.
And that's how they got a whole.
Commissioner Dreehouse is referring to.
Lot of money.
Yes. We benchmark pretty regularly against the other urban counties. And Franklin typically benchmarks well above both Hamilton and Cuyahoga.
Yeah. So it might have been that tax they put on.
Right, right.
So I wanted to highlight that, because people say, oh, man, Franklin County, you know. But we do have to be competitive in the work, in the marketplace. And so I do understand, I wanted to make sure that that was highlighted.
Sure.
Because people say, well, how are they doing it? We're not doing it.
Right.
My understanding.
And if I could interject, our employees saw that, too. They knew that. And we had gotten some feedback, literally what the pay scale was in Franklin County. So again, and we've highlighted some of the other things that the board, took the board's lead. I think that's why we retained most of those people, is Cincinnati's home, Hamilton County's home. So they haven't gone for that big paycheck up in Franklin County. So we're happy about that. And we want to be more innovative with our employees and make sure our staff is happy.
Yeah. And then I'm going to go out and say we're better. It's better to live here in Hamilton County. I've been to both, believe me. But I wanted to also highlight really quickly on the internship, and wanted to see how we can, my biggest thing is like breaking down silos. We are one Hamilton County, even though we got different funding sources, restricted, unrestricted, different ways, but it's still, to the citizen, it's one Hamilton County. And I wanted to make sure that, I want us to do a better job of breaking down silos. And one of the things that we're doing with HR, we have a, with Frank Spataro, and I would love for you guys to connect on this, is that our board came with an internship program that's paid and a fellowship program, similar to what they have in the State House in Columbus. And when you're in Columbus, you do get to, if you get in the fellows programs, the paid program, right after college, so that one year in between, trying to, you have no experience, but you need experience, but you need to get paid. And it goes to different departments. So it does go to the Ohio Supreme Court for, I don't know, a couple of days. And then someone's placed there. So I would like to just kind of piggyback and maybe somehow work together, because we're in the infancy stages of this. I really want this to be robust. I really think this is what we need to get people in and familiarize them of what it means to work with us. So I just would just suggest, if you haven't already, sitting down with Frank, and when we do our budget, we look at kind of a more robust fellowship and internship operation that hits across all of our departments, if you will.
Excellent, excellent. I know we have a working group that's been looking at this, and I'd be happy to make sure that they have contact, and I could be involved as well with Mr. Spataro. I'd be happy to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Well, you stole my thunder about Franklin County. I was all ready to talk about that percentage, because we looked at that when we looked at the sales tax issue a couple of years ago here. But yeah, they're just, they've got a lot of revenue coming in, and we're all very jealous. People all over the state are very jealous of Franklin County. So we talked about the electric monitor systems. Can you help us remember, when we were going through COVID, we were utilizing those at a higher rate, am I right? And so is some of what we're seeing here a result of that as a best practice at that time, and then extending that forward to now?
I think there's clearly an effect from that, that as a result of COVID, with so many people on EMD, and there weren't the level of violations that you would expect to see with the increased number of people on EMD. And I think that a lot of the judges have seen, this is an effective tool, a least restrictive tool, to keep somebody under watch pretrial. And it is used after sentencing as well, but the majority of the usage is certainly pretrial. So I would concur with that, that it's become a best practice.
Yeah. And I, you know, and we all learn as we go. So I think, you know, having learned that, and now extending it forward, I think is really a tribute to your approach and not being in just this lane, but saying, oh, wait a minute, maybe there's a different way to do this. So I know the judges were a large part of that.
Right.
Judge Triggs and you as the administrator. So I appreciate that approach to this, because I think we were hoping the same thing, that it would be a valuable tool, and we could save money by utilizing those instead of the incarceration piece. The other thing I just wanted to note, the specialty courts are really something to be proud of. I think we're all proud of them. I, too, am excited about the reentry court and Judge Cross being the judge in that court. We have a really successful reentry program with Trina Jackson. And I think that now that we will have a specialty court related to that, I think will really take it to the next level. So I'm a big fan of the drug court and the change court, and now the reentry court and the others. So really think that's something that Hamilton County does well. And so want to congratulate all those involved in trying to get that up and off the ground, because I think that, too, will make a significant impact when we talk about some of the folks that are coming back into the community that need the supports that will be made available. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you so much. I'm still sitting here thinking about Franklin County and their sales tax rate, and wondering, is their population, a transient population, not the majority, but I'm thinking about, that's the capital, that's where they do business, and do people, people coming in and out, different officials, and they don't pay attention. Is that a really small amount? Because how are the residents, the permanent residents, allowing that to happen? That's so high.
I would just note that I don't think their sales tax is substantially different from ours as a whole.
One point.
It's just how much is going to the general fund versus going to other places. We have a half cent of ours going to the riverfront.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas they have that going to their general fund.
To the general fund?
Yeah.
Well, I got to get up there. Yeah, I got to get up there and do something about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh huh.
There was a new one. There was a type.
I got three of them now. Okay. Okay, next. Communication Center, Andrew Knapp.
Thank you.
Then we have one more to go. Whoever's watching, if you want to hang in there, you can. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Thank you. I will give you a very high-level overview of the Communication Center. And as you know, because you're working with us and have approved the construction of a new facility, there's a lot of things that are going to be in flex a little bit for us this year, related to exactly what we need. I'm in what I would like to call a prevent defense right now. We know we have a labor issue. We know we have a staffing problem. And we know that we have a new facility coming. And so this budget season should be fairly simple for me, to be honest with you. I'm not asking for a whole lot of change to anything. And I apologize for the late-minute addition. There's, that's just how fresh some of these numbers are that are coming for us. And the good news is that we've addressed some of the issues through our collective bargaining agreement with our labor. We've made our workforce a lot more competitive, and we just haven't seen the fruits of that labor just as of yet. Nonetheless, there's also another smaller division to the Communications Department, which is the Telecommunications Division, although you folks may actually have more contact with them on a regular basis than the 911 Center. The telecom is our networking, anything to do with our voice telephony, anything to do with our computer networking. And every single department within all county buildings interfaces with our telecom in one way, shape, or form. So I'll go to, the telecom budget is actually a very straightforward, a very lean budget, if you will. And I should have prefaced with, I have four separate budgets that I'm responsible for that make up the entirety of the Communications Department. So the first one, the easiest one, low-hanging fruit, is our telecom division. It pretty much has to do, as I say, with all voice and data networks, the management of the phone system, cabling infrastructure, and of course, of utmost importance, and probably, part of the reason why you're seeing a modest increase in this particular budget, has to do with the cybersecurity and our mitigation of cybersecurity risk for the entire county network. Again, anywhere that there's a county building, anywhere there's a county department, we have county network that extends to everywhere. So the increase that we're asking for in this year's budget has to do primarily with the support agreements that are related to the phone system that we just completely rehabbed, and then also redundant internet connectivity and cybersecurity initiatives. Again, telecom is a very lean budget. Progressively, then, we'll move into, at the Communication Center, I have what's called an administration budget. If you were to walk down the hallway of the 911 Center, on the left side of the building is our administration, the right side is our operations. So in the administration side of things, primarily, you have personnel, and then the operation of the facility, of the networks, of the software, and all of the user agreements and maintenance agreements, and all the technology goes in. Anything that relates to the administrative side of the building would be in those line items. And again, as you see, modest increase, nothing too terribly, you know, out of the ordinary, or any kind of anomalies, per se. The operations budget, I would say, is probably the lion's share of what happens at the Communication Center. The operations budget is everything, again, in that hallway, if you take the right side of the building, where the dispatchers and call takers all function, everything related to that operation is housed with that facility. This is an area where our budget is going to be in flex this year for a combination of reasons. The collective bargaining agreement, obviously, was an increase that was necessary. We have equipment that we need to purchase now that will go into the new building. So there's some things that are going to be purchased now that will be moved into the new facility. And then there's also things that we have that we are going to need from our, to move from our facility into that facility, that are, these are the high-end technical components for the 911 equipment, the radio system, and those types of things that are frankly quite expensive. And not just expensive, but the need that I have for those devices is absolutely critical to the operation. So you'll see an increase in the requested budget, and that has to do primarily because of the move. In addition to that, there is a need to upgrade the security on the radio system that is a requirement coming down to us from the state of Ohio. And I'll kind of cover that in my overall capital request. But nonetheless, that's one of the other things that we have to address, are the subscriber radios that are currently on our public safety radio network. The final budget that I'm responsible for at the Communication Center is our wireless budget. The wireless budget is named that because it's the money, quite frankly, that we get from the Wireless Government Assistance Fund. That's the fee that you see on your cellular phone that we receive from the state of Ohio. We get about $1.4 million. It's stayed very flat for the last very many years. I hate to casual guess. I think it's 2013 it was capped. And there is discussion at the state level of perhaps increasing this fee, which then increase the revenue that we gain from that fee. Nonetheless, we can only use that money for very specific things. It's defined in the RSE of what we can use these for: personnel, training, equipment, and operations related to the 911 Center specifically. So it's been kept traditionally in a separate budget so that we monitor the things that go in and out of that budget. Again, stays fairly flat, not a whole lot of change to that, as you can see. The capital request, again, I'm in an awkward phase right now of going into a new building. It's difficult with the staffing struggles that we're having to really launch any broad-spectrum change initiative related to, you know, our training or programs. There's not a whole lot of change I can make to the program right now. You know, we're honestly just trying to survive. Having said that, these are the capital requests for each one of the departments, a modest request for training within our telecom division, and that goes back to our cybersecurity risk. Some of the equipment, copier and ice machine that we need in the administration side of things, right now, we have, quite frankly, a hand scoop-type ice machine. But that ice machine, we're going to be able to take with us over to the new building. The furniture, you can see, is a large dollar figure. That is the dispatch furniture. It is hydraulic furniture. It is very expensive. It gets 24-by-7 use. And usually, when we buy high-end furniture like that, it's furniture that's going to last us for 10 years, if not longer. And it looks like a large dollar amount. But again, it's hydraulic, it's ergonomic, it has the appropriate space, the appropriate lighting, everything that goes into a traditional dispatch center, like, you know, what you would see. The P25 software is that upgrade that we need for our subscriber radios, a requirement from the state of Ohio. I have to have this completed by 2025. In order for our radios to work on the 800 megahertz radio system, every subscriber radio has to have some security software added to that radio to make it function. The command training center is a fire report, is a fire training system that we want to use. About 23 of our fire departments have gone to, it's called a Hazard Zone Management System. It is a way that they handle radio traffic back and forth between the dispatcher and on the fire ground in a tactical operation. It's critical that our dispatchers know and understand that. And by the purchase of the command training software, and along with the command training center, I'll be able to do regular training with the dispatchers in a simulated environment so that we can get them up to speed in an offline, you know, a safe environment, with not having to risk something, you know, learning on the fly, if you will, when there's an actual large fire going on. The rest of the equipment are things that we're going to need for the move. We're very fortunate in that we already have a functioning backup center. That 911 equipment that we have at the backup center is going to need to be moved. It's very sensitive. It's very expensive computer equipment, along with other things that we don't even know yet. And we've already approved some of the monies for some of the radio system infrastructure to be done. So that is already underway. I would expect that our budget, and we're going to work with the Budget Office, I would expect the requests that I'm going to need probably to go down, we are more than likely going to see some change in this at some point between now and a final budget. And I'll work very closely with John Staff as to what's needed for that. And with that, I believe that that's the end of my budget presentation. I'd be remiss if I didn't take just a brief moment to recognize my staff, who continues to struggle with the shortages that we have with the workforce. They're working an unbelievable amount of overtime hours. And in doing so, so that the agency continues to operate and function, the public would have no idea that we're struggling as we are. And I applaud them for their efforts and appreciate your support as we work through this together.
Thank you. And we applaud them also. I know you've been working a lot of overtime and things like that, too. So we thank all of them. Please send our.
Thank you.
Appreciation to them. When is the move-in date, would you say?
So we continue to work with the design team on this. I wish I had an exact date. I wish I had an exact date. You know, the intention is sometime in '23 to begin that move-in process. I would expect late 2023, if not early 2024, for the actual move-in. But the facilities department with Ralph and all of his folks are doing, you know, a phenomenal job with getting us the right equipment and the right facility with the right modifications that we need to that building to make it work for us.
Okay. In addition, the reserve balance for '23 went up about $91,000. So how do you, where did that additional reserve come from?
We've always kept a little bit of a reserve, knowing that our equipment is incredibly expensive. And rather than to have to become a sudden drain on the general fund and asking for something mid-budget cycle, the communications center, actually even prior to me being on board, and I've been here six years now, although I still say I'm new. But prior to me being here, and Mr. Brugan may be able to answer that better than I, the reserve balance is there as that cushion, knowing that our equipment is incredibly expensive. And it's there in the event, you know, we need something without, you know, having set it aside in advance.
That's great. Yeah, I'm good with that. Vice President Reese.
Thank you for your presentation and to all the workers. I know we've been dealing with this issue in terms of maintaining workers. And this is a life-or-death-safety type of issue. And I know that yourself, even, you know, if you're short on staff, you roll up your own sleeve. You don't walk around like, "I'm the director." You roll up your sleeve, start getting on the phones, too. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I appreciate that. Now, I was at your old facility, or the facility you're at now, and believe me, that it's overdue. And this new facility, or the facility we're going to go in and redo, you know, wanted to make sure that you're also working, I guess, facilities is working with Robert Bell and the Bold List as they put out contracts for the work in that facility, the furniture in that facility. And when we talk about furniture office layout, obviously, because you have some types of cubicles, but enough space where you're talking, one is on the, talking to someone, the other also can talk, and they don't interfere with each other. But I do want to say that we've had a lot of presentations today. And one issue that hasn't come up, and you just talked about it here, is cybersecurity. That is critically important with the type of sensitive information, making sure we don't get hacked. And, you know, in our telecommunications system, both at the headquarters, and then you also do all the telecommunications for all of the county buildings. So just wanted to make sure that cybersecurity is on the front lines of our minds and in the budget, because we've got to have security in all that we manage, obviously. And it's not just the Board of Elections. You hear about it, the Board of Elections, but we need that in almost every facet as we're dealing with sensitive information.
Absolutely. And it is included within this budget, and it has been over the last several years. And I can tell you, again, Mr. Brugan is very good about it. There's something that we say that we need related to the cybersecurity, we address it. We can always be better. And to be honest with you, the most vulnerable aspect of our network is each and every one of us, the employees. And what they really need to do is make sure that they are not clicking on inappropriate links, make sure they're not bringing in things from the outside that can harm our system. And so we are ever vigilant. I can assure you, on the cybersecurity issue, we are, we're always vulnerable, quite vulnerable for, to be honest with you. But nonetheless, we remain as vigilant as we can be with our cybersecurity. And administration has been very responsive to that.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Just have one quick question. And Andy, thank you for being here. I, too, want to applaud your staff and yourself for the overtime work that you're doing to keep this community safe. I know it's been a struggle. We've heard a lot about this struggle for, I think, a year and a half at least here at the board level. And so it begs the question, and this is, and I don't know if it's for John or for yourself, as we have tried to respond to the concerns you've brought to us related to wages for your employees, trying to retain those employees, any kind of additional money that went to communications center in the interim, between budget cycle to budget cycle, where is that incorporated? Or is it incorporated in the numbers that we're looking at?
I would say it's incorporated in our projections for this year. And without having looked at it in detail, my guess, Andy, is that you're still operating within the 2022 budget.
Yes.
Because you've had so much vacancy that you're able to absorb the wage adjustments that we've done.
And that's exactly right. A lot of the wage adjustments that we've had thus far are somewhat normalized, if you will, by the vacancy rate that we have. You know, I believe I have 14 to 15 vacancies at the dispatcher ranks right now. And that has been pretty steady throughout the year despite our hiring efforts that we do. It seems like I take two steps forward, one step back. And as a result, there's the normalization within the budget. Now, obviously, we have the overtime that is somewhat unpredictable based on our staffing levels. Nonetheless, because of the vacancy rate, the overtime, it tends to normalize each other.
I see. So it's absorbed, really.
Correct.
Okay. So then, lastly, and I know you're trying very hard to recruit, to train, to retain some of the folks that you're bringing in. So is the request, then, relative to a higher number of employees? Or is it, does that reflect wage increases?
I would say it reflects the wage increases. We've not changed the FTEs. The FTEs have remained flat. We, you know, again, struggle to get to that number that we have. And so there's been no request at this point to increase our FTEs. Also, our collective bargaining unit, the dispatchers' union, the communications officers' union, agreed to try to help us with a staffing issue by changing their schedule to a 12-hour shift. So it takes less employees to actually fill our shifts. And unfortunately, you know, just again, due to the state of our society with workforce issues, we're still struggling with even hitting that number. You know, we offered the 12-hour shifts as a means to give them more off time. They would work more on the, at the front end, but then have more off time. And we just have not had the ability to realize that as of yet, due to the low numbers that we have.
Right. So, but what I'm asking is that the request for 2023, does that anticipate the FTEs that you currently have? No additional FTEs, but the FTEs you currently have, those positions being filled? And that's part of the increase here?
Yes.
Because you've got the wage increases, and then you have the employee vacancy rate reduced. And that's what we're seeing here in this graph. Is that correct?
That's correct. And in fact, Andy's team does exactly what they should do. They're requesting 100% of filled positions. And they're assuming that the overtime is going to look a lot like it does this year. So this is where, you know, our team looks at those numbers and probably pulls back a bit, because you're not going to see both of those things happen.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And for those that are listening, the new building that Andy is talking about is in Springdale.
Correct.
And it will be a 911 comm center. In addition to the emergency management agency will be in that same building. So we are extending, even though you guys are responsible, of course, for the whole county, but that building will be out in that area. So by maybe the end of '23 and early '24. So I think that was a great decision to combine you guys together. And so EMA will be coming to us with a separate budget as it relates to what they need in that building also.
Right.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Facilities, Ralph Lenny. I didn't even see him back there. Hello, welcome.
Yes.
Save the best for last?
Yes, I'm late. And if I'm home much later than I'm supposed to be, I get to buy my wife dinner.
Okay.
So she's happy about this. I have three gentlemen that needs to come up here and sit. Give you an overview of the department. Basically, we take care of approximately 15 or 16 facilities, over 3.2 million feet, square feet. The biggest challenge that we really have in maintaining it is the fact that the buildings are different-aged. Some of the buildings are basically 100 years old, plus more than 100 years old. Other buildings, just as a new crime lab, is three years old. We have every type in between, 324R, seven-day facilities, a 911 Center, juvenile detention, the Justice Center, which means they get a heavy usage compared to our other buildings. So that's one of the things we have to do, as well as we deal with the different types of equipment and the obsolescence of some of them that's occurring. Here's our organization chart, and I'll introduce Sarah with the Assistant Director of Facilities Management. You can see what all Tony Montre has to take care of. Assistant Director is for project management, is Bert Watts. And then Assistant Director for Support Services is Tim Schu. John Michael cannot be here. He's the Director of Capital Improvements, responsible for, he has some meetings out, closing up the Coroner's Facilities Project today. And he will be the person in charge, along with me, for the 911 EMA project. I take care of the design, he'll take care of the construction side of it. Basically, this is just a breakdown how our budget breaks out. As you can see, the percentages compared to our requests in 2023 to 2022. Not much variance overall as to where it is spread out. The biggest increase is in the area of materials and supplies that we're dealing with. That is basically due to the inflation, as well as the fact we have more buildings to take care of. So there is a direct increase from there. This is a breakdown of our budget. Basically, we're looking at $4.7 million more to maintain our facilities in 2023 versus 2022. Wages and benefits, we're looking at increase of 1.4. Utilities, we're very fortunate. We're only looking at about $300,000, in spite of adding a couple of facilities that wasn't our budget. A lot of this is due to the way we have purchased electricity. This will be our last year in 2023. We're on a flat rate for five years. So 2024, we will probably see a significant increase in electricity costs. Natural gas, we see an increase, but it is offset with some of our savings. So that's kind of where we're at there. Here's the other one that's a kind of big hit is materials and supplies. Bert and Tony enjoy spending a lot of money in that area, $2.2 million. The plus is, when we buy this stuff, there is no markup from a contractor. We go out for quotes. We take advantage of our bold vendors where the opportunity presents itself. Contracted services, this is like cleaning, fire alarm systems, so forth. These contracts are locked in. This does represent a small increase we have. We went out and bid the cleaning contracts this last year, and that is incorporated in that. But because they're basically fixed numbers, that's been improved with whatever the increases that's been in the contracts that you all approved, we didn't get hit too bad there. Leases and taxes, the biggest reason this is going up is because we're going to be responsible for the lease for Ohio State University Extension Center, and that'll be in our budget in 2023. And prior to that, they were at the, they're staying at the DDS warehouse in Northside. So there was no cost to the county at that time. Here's our new responsibilities. We're going to be responsible to maintain the EMA sirens. This is a new cost to us. We will be working with Nick on this. The electricians were added to our budget last year for the responsibility of taking care of this for him. The other one is the Northside Building that was just reimbursed DDS this year for us taking it over. It will be used for the overfill for the animal shelter. We are in the process of taking a look at how that building would be renovated in the future years. The 911 EMA, we will have some costs until we go out and award the contract for construction. These are basic costs such as elevator maintenance, fire alarm system, groundkeeping, and whatever else we need to take care of out there. The one I just mentioned, the OSU extension lease. We're only looking, right now, we're requesting only five positions, increase in our staffing, due to the number of projects. Bert needs help in many ways. But we're looking at facilities project manager, and two or three project managers would report to this person to coordinate the activities, as well as to pick up some of Bert's workload, and also look in the idea of succession planning. The other one we're looking at is for the apprentice program, is to add a maintenance manager and trainer. Basically, this position report to Tony Montre will be responsible for the training when we launch the apprentice program, as well as additional training for our staff that's needed, and will help Tony with the management of the building managers. Next three positions is due to the needs in the Justice Center. We're looking at carpenter to help take care of repair of doors and locks that are, particularly the locks that are not electronic. Those are handled by our electricians. The other two is the painter and plaster with the idea that we will be going into maybe a four- or five-year project is to completely repair the walls and repaint the interior of both buildings at the Justice Center. That would be a cost savings versus contracting it out. These are the firm maintenance projects that we have listed. These is always, we've had about $3 million budgeted in the past. We're going to ask for $3.5 half a million more. These are things, some of these we have to do, like the facade assessments, the city requires us to do that, and other projects. We also are leaving some money aside for our department requests as they come in during the year to approach those. Any questions?
Wow. Very good. Thank you, Ralph. Great presentation. I am not familiar, maybe I should be, with the Ohio State University Extension Program that we're paying for the leasing. Can you explain what that's about?
I will defer to the Assistant County Administrator.
The OSU Extension Program is probably best known for their 4H program, but they provide other kinds of services like that. There's a program representative in every county in the state, and we're required to provide the space for that program. We provide some operating cost for it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm familiar with 4H, but thank you so much. The other thing, Ralph, did you think about the possibility of the cost of a satellite office? We're looking at the satellite offices, as was mentioned earlier by Vice President Reese. And I'm hoping that we, as a board, can facilitate some action next year to make that happen, and which would increase, you know, utilities, things like that. Had you thought about?
I've been involved with Mr. Ludo with looking at the space that EMA's been looking at.
Okay. But did you think you needed to include?
I would not include it until I know what the cost will be.
Okay.
Because we do not have a contract to lease any space at this point.
So we'd have to just come back when we get the definite cost, John, and reallocate more funding for that purpose?
That's correct. And Assistant Administrator Christman just reminds me that that's anticipated to be funded via ARPA at the initial startup.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. And we do have a lot of buildings that a lot of needs, as you've put in there. The buildings have gotten older and need a lot, need some work. So I want to thank you for trying to move forward with them. Now, is the elevator out here included? Is it going to be working?
That's, the contract is this year.
Oh, that's going to be done? Okay.
It'll be done next year, but it comes with.
Well, it needs to work this year.
On the 29th, the contract's coming in front of you. I'm sure you will approve it.
Oh, yeah.
It is under the, you know, the, it's under the 10%, you know.
Yeah. I'd like to approve it, but I don't want to be stuck in the elevator where I can't vote. But my other question is, I know that these are the buildings that we own, and we're talking about all funds budget, you know, now. So some things we're talking about are restricted funds, and some are from general funds. But I wanted to ask Director Brugan, our budget director, how do we deal with, like, Hamilton County, like Board of Elections? We got gas, electric bills, and places that we lease. We lease some places as well. Where does that fall in the framework?
I'll ask Ralph to answer, if I've missed this, but I would expect that those are in the departments where the leases are. But they vary in different.
They would be within, the Board of Elections would be within their budget.
Right.
Okay? In that scenario. Okay, in that scenario. One place we do get money reimbursed for is Alms and Depke through, a year later, money comes into, whatever I spend a year later, county administration invoices JFS, so those funds come back. So, basically, that's paid for, general funds reimbursed for the cost at Alms and Depke building.
Gotcha. So, we're renting someplace, then that would be in their actual, the department's budget, not your, this budget here?
Correct, at this time.
At this, okay. Gotcha. And again, you know, we compliment you in terms of saving us a lot of money with the gas and electric and those kind of things that you made a presentation a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yes, and I have an annual meeting next month with the CCAO's Executive Energy Annual Meeting to see what's going to be changed for next year.
Gotcha, thank you. Oh, I do have one other thing. The juvenile building, we did have them, are they on here, Juvenile Court?
Yeah, I'm responsible for that facility.
What are we going to do with that? They had some, I mean, it's, I didn't mean to say it like that. It's a beautiful building, but I asked for power washing, and they said it might fall apart.
Oh, you're talking about 800 Broadway.
Yes, 800 Broadway.
Yeah, I thought you was talking about juvenile detention.
No, no, the 800 Broadway. Is that on here?
We will be doing, seeing what we can do, what the cost will be, and if it makes sense to do it before we go and replace the facade or not.
Gotcha, okay.
That's Bert Watts' opportunity.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I just want to say, I laughed at that because that's the $800 million question. It's what are we going to do with that building?
Well, I say we turn it into a boutique hotel. That's what I say. To the, and I, this was my question. Can you, and I know we've done a study in the past about all the facilities, all the buildings, and the capital needs that are required, and, you know, to get to this conversation about whether or not we can consolidate in some buildings, whether some buildings, you know, you're throwing good money after bad in some of them. And I know we've got really old house, or building stock, but can you resurrect that study that was done and try to help us better understand what was looked at at that time, what was contemplated by way of consolidation? I've always thought that we should be over at the courthouse. I mean, I, why, I just think that this is an administrative building, and we should move to the courthouse. I've always thought this was a great idea. But there are opportunities with some of our buildings that aren't full, and then other buildings are in disrepair, and maybe we should offload them. And so, I think we need to take a really broad look at all this as we work through. And part of the reason, you know, we did the sales tax, and I know, I don't mean to overly harp on it, but part of it was employee-related, part of it was facilities-related, because we knew we had so much deferred maintenance. And we, and, you know, we've got, 800 Broadway's not the only one that's crumbling, Alms and Depke, we've got concrete every now and again falling off of that building. So, we've got some serious issues with our building stock, and if you could provide us with that, and maybe we could have a session.
Yes.
About just our building stock and what is being contemplated for the near future.
Can do that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, I would just note that, you know, we're working on that. We've moved several of those projects forward. Alms and Depke is moving forward on facade repairs. We've made a, we've put forward a major repair at 250 William Howard Taft in the last few weeks, and Ashley, Ralph, and myself and Jeffrey are meeting later this week to, in part, to dust off that study and look at some other options in front of us.
Thank you. Ralph, you're just too comfortable up there. You realize how to deal with us, I think, and so your questions and your answers are just awesome. You've done your research, and I know you've been in here before while we were having other budget deliberations, and so you're just doing an awesome guy.
I have three wonderful people, plus John Michaels, who makes my job very easy.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you all for what you do. Now it's time, we've been sitting here for a while. Come on. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Commissioner Semiradumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes. Thank you all.[1546.88]